Council meeting, it's 6:01 PM and all council members are in attendance. Glad to have you all here tonight, especially like to thank former Mayor Petty and also a veteran. Tonight he is going to, we have the privilege of having him give our, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'll begin with that.
Council meeting, it's 6:01 PM and all council members are in attendance. Glad to have you all here tonight, especially like to thank former Mayor Petty and also a veteran. Tonight he is going to, we have the privilege.
Please repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every equal justice for all.
Thank you so much Mayor Petty. All right, 80 years ago today, the Imperial Japanese Navy attacked our forces at Pearl Harbor and other locations in Hawaii, taking the lives of 2,403 service members and civilians and leading the United States to declare its entrance into World War II. In honor of those who lost their lives that day, we will now observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Our next item will be our prayer and Councilwoman Petty will be giving that.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee with gratitude for the many blessings thou has given us, for the wonderful opportunity we have to live in this beautiful free country. And we ask good blessing upon all of our servicemen, our military, all of our fire and sheriffs and police, that they will be watched over and protected, that we can continue to live in a safe and free country. We have good blessing upon all of us, that we can make good decisions on behalf of our city, that we can all work together with the right spirit of camaraderie and be able to accomplish much. We are so grateful for everything that was given us, for our wonderful little valley and we love thee and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you Councilwoman Petty. Our next item is public comment. Please state your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Please address the entire council and know that we won't respond during public comment. We're now open for public comment. Thank you, Paul.
Paul Sturm, 2527 Deer Run Drive. My first public comment is on Agenda Item Number 99. Think like it's 90 tonight. First reference is ordinance 2021-14 Private Roads. Please reference packet page 63 and 64, the Option A table. In this table of zones and allowances, under Zone C, it references Zone R-P. Typically, one would present the explanation of Zone R-P prior to using it as a reference. But due to the fact that the existing zone code sequence is as presented, I suggest a reference to Zone R-P as follows for Zone C. Same as R-P, no on-street parking. Please see Zone R-P below for context. Item number two has the same thing, but this is for page 64 and 65 for Option B tables. Number three, reference packet page 79 of 135. I believe that Option B should be approved so as to be more consistent with the well-established concept within South Weaver City of having a country feel. The R7 zone without a private right-of-way option provides this feeling as described in the South Weaver City General Plan. It provides the same look and feel as the majority of the residential areas within South Weaver City and not the congested appearance that permitting a private right-of-way within an R7 zone would create. The next is on Agenda Item 15. It's just a nomenclature reference, South Weaver City Stormwater Management Plan, packet pages 112 through 132 of 135. The comment is for packet page 116, General System Overdue, Second Paragraph. The second paragraph references, excuse me, the Davis Canal. This is just a local way of referencing this structure. Since this is an official document, this canal should be identified by its proper name, Davis and Weaver County Canal. It is operated by the Davis and Weaver County Canal Company, DWCCC, with Rick Smith as its general manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
William Petty, 7898 South, 2800 East. I'll address the whole council, you can all listen, but there's just two members I'm actually addressing. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Chaublon and Councilmember Windsor for the time, effort that they have put in on behalf of our city. Having some little experience of being behind that bench, I know it takes a big piece of your heart and your lives and your families have to support that as well. But on behalf of me and my family, I would like to thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you Mayor Petty. Is there any further public comment? Okay, hearing none. Let's go to our first action item, which is approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the November check register, the October 26th meeting minutes, and the November 16th meeting minutes. Are there comments or questions on the consent agenda? And do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further comment? Then we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 And motion carries unanimously. The next item is the 2022 Meeting Schedule, a motion to adopt. For the Open and Public Meetings Act, all public bodies are required to post their proposed meeting schedule for the upcoming year. In keeping with the City Code 1-2-4, council meetings are held the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month. Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference will take place at the second meeting in April and the schedule is modified to only, to only second Tuesdays in November and December to accommodate holidays. The Planning Commission is not mandated by City Code to do a specific schedule. However, meetings are generally held the second Thursday of each month so as not to interfere with court proceedings held the first and third Thursdays. Are there questions or comments on the meeting schedule for next year? Then I will entertain the motion to adopt.
So, Matt.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the motion carries unanimously. The next item is Fire Station Alerts Purchase. South Weaver City Council previously discussed in public meeting on November 16th to Davis County Dispatch Electronic Consolidation and Related Need for the Fire Station Alert System Upgrade. Tonight's item is for the City Council to authorize the purchase amount of the project to upgrade the station alert system. Leighton City is currently in the process of upgrading their system alerts for all their stations. The contractor they selected through the procurement process, MOPA LLC, has agreed to include our station at the end of the project honoring the prices they gave Leighton. Thirty-nine thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars and four cents would be the total.
Say that number again?
Thirty-nine thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars and four cents.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Chief, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, happy to answer any questions you have though.
Okay, are there any comments or questions from council?
Question. Can you help me understand the definition of end of project? Is that six months, one year, five years?
So Leighton's already done their three existing stations and they're getting ready to open the fourth station at the beginning of this next year. And so when we say end of project, like they are at their end of project and they're rolling us in with, since they're here doing Leighton stations to do us as well.
So just to repeat back, they'll begin this work late this winter, early spring and be done before June 30th?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? And do I have a motion to approve the Fire Station Alerts Purchase of MOPA LLC at thirty-nine thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars and four cents?
Mayor, make a motion, we approve the purchase of the Fire Station Alert System awarded to MOPA LLC in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars and four cents.
Great, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further comments? We'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
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 And the motion carries unanimously. All right, next item is RV Park Cabins. The development agreement for Riverside RV Park was approved in April 2020 and the Resolution 2020-03 allowed up to 23 mobile cabin units owned by the park, which would be rentals. The park owners have come across a modular cabin type, which is a variation of the originally presented version. The owner McKay Winkle states that he came across a very nice modular cabin in Missouri. He found out Rhino Rock makes them right here in Utah. According to McKay, they are energy efficient, very nice, and still removable, though not as quickly as the approved cabins. McKay would like the council to consider these cabins for the following reasons. They have higher quality finishes, a ground level entry, they are very efficient, they're more expensive but worth the cost, they are built with fireproof materials, and flooding wouldn't hurt them. Stamp engineered drawings are available upon request and the units come in a kit and are assembled on-site. Does that cover it McKay? All right, well, are there comments or questions by council?
Mayor? Sorry, I'm not council at all, but before you get too far into this, staff's had something come up on this item very recently and we feel like a little bit more time for us to research how this may affect fire code and other things might be beneficial before the council makes a decision. So if you're okay, you're happy to talk about it, McKay's here and have some conversation, but we'd like to answer a couple of questions related to fire code and maybe move this to the January 11th meeting. And just if you're okay with us having some more time to vet this before bringing it back.
Okay, is the council okay to discuss it now and then possibly table it until the January meeting?
Yeah, I think McKay drove up from down south, we might as well let him explain.
Yeah, could you come up to the mic?
McKay Winkle, 855 East Cottonwood Drive is our business location. I think Trevor's pulling up some info. So these cabin units, Trevor, if you could advance the slides a little bit. I think this is kind of what was originally contemplated. Kind of, you can see the skirting, they kind of sit up higher in there. Kind of those cabins you see at other RV parks. The one I stayed in was pretty much that, except it's only half as wide. And the system, it's pretty neat, it's essentially styrofoam panels that they stack between metal supports every three feet or so, I can't remember what it is. But, and then they just cover that with like a, like a shot concrete something and then you can finish it with whatever you like. The foundation is, it's a styrofoam U-shaped foundation. They just set on the, on the ground, it's kind of hollowed out and you pour concrete in it and then fasten the supports to that concrete, kind of drill it in. So removing it would take a lot longer, you'd have to go in and unscrew the foundation, put a couple of supports by it and then kind of crane it off. But they're really nice units, I mean, they feel, I mean, they're airy, open, finished with drywall inside, I mean, they're just really, really nice. And anyway, we thought they'd be a great fit here. I think they would just look a lot cleaner, better, they're more energy efficient. They would have kind of mini split systems, but they're, I want to say R40 in the walls, R50 in the ceiling. Like we made extra strong for the wind loads, snow loads, et cetera. But I know it wasn't what was initially contemplated, I think it would look nicer, but just wanted to kind of see what you guys thought of them, if it were something we could look into. If not, that's okay, I just would like to do them, but I would like to get your thoughts, what you guys think.
All right, thank you McKay. Questions from the council through McKay? Or comments?
So I do have one question, this may be for McKay or staff. You know, there's several comments about being easily removable or not easily removable. What does our code say? It says, you know, our development agreement says, the code at the time, it's back in June of last year. Do they have any requirement for removable ability?
I can speak to fire code if you want.
Babe? Sure.
The issue that was brought up tonight was anytime there's a project, you base your gallons per minute flow that you need on a project based on square footage. And the only way you don't count square footage towards a project is if you can hook up a truck to that trailer and pull that trailer out of the project like was previously planned. So the second you have a structure like this that is not on a trailer with wheels, that square footage now comes into play when we're talking gallons per minute for the fire flows. And so it, even with these structures and with the flow we have down there now, it may, it may not. The fire department hasn't had time to review whether or not these new structures will add enough square footage to the overall project that we need to either decrease the number of structures or increase our flow, which I think we've already maximized our flow down there and you've been great working with us in the past. But this just adds a whole new level of dynamics where fire code is very specific, that if it is not easily movable, as in wheels on a trailer, then it counts as a permanent structure.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments?
Well, that was one of my biggest questions, is how does that deal with the floodplain issue and that as well? So I mean, I know what they're, I don't know what the wetlands or the, I guess, it's not really the wetlands, it would be.
Floodplain.
You said it, floodplain.
Yeah, the floodplain would require, to be required as removable. I don't necessarily have a problem with the structure itself, I mean, they're nice. I mean, I do prefer the cabin feel and I think that's what we were sold on. I think some of the pictures you gave us tonight, made those look bad. The pictures we were given before were not made to look bad, that skirting was not the skirting we were given tonight. So I kind of take that into question McKay, a little bit. I know, I know how you want to skew us one way or the other, but I don't think that metal skirting would be quite acceptable anyway.
I didn't realize there's any metal in there, but yeah, I think I had used one of those the first time, but I apologize.
The cabin ones you did, yeah.
To the fire department, question real fast, does it make any difference? So there's no wood in them or they say they're not combustible, just being styrofoam metal and.
Right.
Drywall, does that come into play at all?
To me, this still would be classified as a Type 4 structure, which means it does qualify. Because anytime, like to be classified as a Class 1 or Class 2 structure, it would have to be like a parking garage for Class 1. The Class 2 means like steel beams that are sprayed with fire retardant and stuff like that. So it, and again, this just got sprung on me tonight, so I apologize to not have a concrete answer for you. But I would still classify those as Type 4 structures, so they would qualify for the square footage requirements. But we will get you, we'll do a full report for now, thanks.
All right, anyone else? Barring any code issues, how does the council feel about the structure as compared to the ones that have been approved?
I can't get behind it, what my voice has to say tonight. This is going against what we originally conceived, conceived a year or so ago. It's in a floodplain, they need to be movable. The ease of moving it, you're going to have to order a crane, wait for the crane to show up. You have to have flatbed trucks. The idea was to have these things, they could be moved, you could just, you actually sold the council on removing some of them because you thought there'd be a greater demand for the RVs and not these, these facilities that you thought would be more useful in the later. So putting something on the ground and having the foundation behind them makes it more of a permanent aspect. I don't like that. It's not part of the original plan that we approved.
Thank you, Councilman Windsor. Anyone else?
Well, for what it's worth, I think they look nice. I, and if you compare the picture of the log cabin, which I do like the log cabin style for an RV park, but you can see clearly the, excuse me, the axle, the wheels and like cinder block, concrete blocks it's on, whereas the other one does look nicer. So as long as it meets code, I don't really necessarily have a problem with it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Petty.
Sorry, I'm trying to review a couple of things here. The, I do agree with Wayne in terms of the ability to move it quickly, having. Having listened to that planning commission meeting, I mean, it was pretty thorough. Where they wanted to make sure that whatever went there wasn't a mobile home or a permanent fixture, especially due to the floodplain. And you were really aware of that, but it was meant to be more of a, the temporary in nature. But the RV cabins that you put up, I was a little confused by it. I was trying to read through our development agreement and things regarding the skirting. I'm not sure if we, I'm glad that Blair brought that up because when I saw these ones that you displayed here, I was, that was not what was in my brain or what I had thought. So the log cabin one, I do like the design of that one a little bit more. The one that you have here showing, sorry, I think it looks like.
Is there any way to show me what you're looking at?
Sorry, the one that you proposed. I think it looks like a state park bathroom, I'm sorry, I don't mean to offend. But I, so I would like to see if this is something that does meet code. Maybe jazzed up a little bit, especially when it comes to the building that was built over there, which is beautiful, these would look very.
Go to the next one down, yeah.
Yes, there you go. But again, I do feel that to be, to allow this would be to discredit what the intention of this RV park was and what the intention of the planning commission was when they created, when they changed the code to allow this. And being that they wanted it to be able to move quickly, so I guess we'll come back in a month.
I don't disagree with any of that, but was the intent was movable in the floodplain? I'm here to see what you guys thought of these. Because you did like the look of this one, is that what you were saying?
That's one I think looks like a state park bathroom, minus the, minus the big windows there. You know, I like the white one a little bit better, but I went and drove around the RV park today just to kind of visualize it. And I just think with the buildings that you have there, the clubhouse and the main office, this look is different than, the look of the state park bathroom is different than the look of the beautiful buildings that you've built there. So I would.
We, I mean, we would tie it in, I mean, you can put whatever on the outside, I mean, the.
I guess what I'm saying in retrospect is regardless of which tiny home you go for, I hope aesthetically, it's looking more so like.
Oh, for sure.
The buildings that have been built there and not the mobile home parks that you've given us here.
Yeah, no, we don't, I mean, I think what's there is very nice. I think it's indicative of what we're going for. We're not trying to cut corners or bring in something that doesn't look good. And we wouldn't bring in something that didn't look good. Which I don't know if now's the best time to ask, but the development agreement says twenty-three cabins. I don't imagine there'd be a problem if we did less than twenty-three and just use regular RV spaces, right? Like those can be interchanged.
I think that's what the development agreement did it all to, I would have to double check it. I do have a question about that, and I couldn't figure out for sure, but when I went and drove through today, are the tiny homes shifted? Okay, so if your drive-through for trailers this way, are the tiny homes sitting perpendicular?
In one area, yeah. We've been thinking of changing that just to make the RV spaces longer there and just take those out altogether. Might be better.
Okay.
As it's kind of built, some things are coming to our mind, but so we may scratch a few cabins. And I don't know if now's, whenever, now's the right time to like, if we do scratch a few and make some spaces longer, is that something that needs council approval?
I thought the development agreement said up to.
It does, section sixteen of the agreement, I've got it in front of me.
But it does change the landscape a little bit.
Up to twenty-three.
Well, I do have a question because you also have a limit in the development agreement of how many sites you can have. Does that put you over the sites you can have? I mean, if you're extending the site, that's not a problem, but if you're adding more sites.
Yeah, we'd actually, we'd be taking away some.
Okay, but not adding more RV sites, okay, then I think you should be fine. But I'll leave that to the staff to answer officially.
We'll ask when we make our final decision, I guess, but I think we're contemplating removing a few cabins and changing a few sites to be RVs.
Okay, so long story short, on the contemplated RV cabins, the one on the right and the one on the bottom are really ugly, so don't do that.
I wish we had a city bathroom that looks that nice.
Let's do it. I'm good with that in a city bathroom, for sure.
I just want to say to your point, because I totally appreciate what you say. But I am going to say, I want to make sure that we don't hold so tightly to something that we said, well, this was the intent, if we're going to get a better finished product by making some adjustments. So I don't want staff and council to be so rigid on that, so.
Well, I'm okay with if it meets code, because our agreement says per our tiny house code, correct? Is that, I mean, it's word for word, I think. And so if it meets that and it meets the floodplain requirements, I mean, and then aesthetically, it doesn't look like it's a modern thing over there amongst a bunch of rustic things. I'm okay with it if it meets code.
Just out of curiosity, I don't know who this would go to, but who determines if it meets code regarding a floodplain if the code states that it needs to be removed quickly? Like is there a definition of the timeframe of the word quickly?
I think regardless of the floodplain code, the fire code specifies that they have to be removed quickly.
What is quickly?
Like you have to be able to hook a truck up to it and move it.
Okay, so in this case, these would not hit the quickly.
As far as removable structure, as far as the floodplain specific stuff, I don't know. But as far as our definition.
Well, floodplain is removable structure, but I don't know if they have a timeframe on it. So I'm just wondering if it passes fire code, would it pass the floodplain code? And how do we know what quickly is decided?
We'll look into those definitions and make sure that we have that evaluation provided for next month. If it doesn't qualify, then it won't come before you next month.
If we need to have a race, Haley and I can have a race and see who's quicker and then we could determine what quickly should be.
Just depends on how fast I can take her to the ground to get to the end of wherever we're going. She's just little, she's just tiny.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, I just had a couple more questions McKay, and this is probably getting into your business model and, you know, we probably don't need to go into all those details, but there's obviously a reason you want these. You've identified some of the benefits, you know, the insulation, the ground level. I mean, what of those benefits is the biggest thing you're wanting to, why you're wanting to swap it out and pay more money?
I think appearance, honestly. I think they look a lot cleaner, sharper.
The inside, the outside, or the whole thing?
Really, the outside is what concerns me most, that's what everybody's going to be seeing and kind of the vibe that'll put off on the property. Inside will be nice too, but bigger concern, I think, was just the exterior. How they look, how you can make them look, and entry at the grade level is really nice and to hike up some stairs. And yeah, I mean, the business model piece of it was, you didn't have to have an RV to be a customer, you know, bring in, come and stay, but I think there's so much demand for RVs right now that I think, I don't know that, I think we could still fill them up without the cabins, is kind of what we're thinking. And you don't have to spend the extra money to get a customer there.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? McKay, thanks for being here tonight, I appreciate it. And I just want to say that that park looks beautiful. You've done a really, really nice job on it and walked the trail the other day and.
I mean, it's, I love it, it's been so fun and I think it's turned out awesome. We've had really good teams out there that are doing it and really great to work with. And a slow start, but I think it's turned out really well.
Definitely has, thank you.
Thanks McKay.
Thanks for that.
We'll let you know in January, I guess. Oh, so do I have a motion on the RV park cabin?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to continue. Gosh, what item is it?
It's just number eight, RV park cabin.
The RV park cabins discussion or action item.
Okay, have a second? Okay, any further comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, and the motion carries. Let's go to item number nine, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, private roads. City council seeks to clarify the use of private rights of way within the city. The planning commission issued a recommendation to South Weaver City Council on November tenth. And I'm just gonna turn the ti, oh, he's over there, turn the time over to Trevor to kind of summarize for us.
I'm hiding over here. I get to pull double duty today. Well, thank you for the time to present this to you. We, I'm going to use the similar presentation for, that we did at the planning commission. So if you've seen that, some shock value is going to be out of it, that's fine. But, so. I do, I did add one element, but we'll make it all better.
Unnecessary.
It's great. All right, so why the AG double hockey sticks are we even talking about private right of ways? Well, I can tell you that. Our private right of way ordinance, right now, it's mainly found in the PUD portion of our code. There is some reference to private right of ways being allowed to residents, to residences. So let's say I had an acre parcel, I wanted to split it, sell the back half to my, my son and put a private right of way, if there's enough space, we would allow that in our, in our current code, but it can only feed two residents, and there are some other provisions that are around that. So it's pretty limited on how, on the application of using that. So we wanted to seek for some clarification on how we could apply private right of ways across the city. These have been used in the city for a very long time, whether that's to access a farm or to build a new subdivision. We've seen some of those farm access roads that are around, that's, we're familiar with the private right of ways for those. And then some other private right of ways, for instance, would be on places like Freedom Landing, that would be a private right of way application within the city. In addition to what we've seen in the city, we've also seen applications of private right of ways in other cities. And we're not going to name any names, but in late, I mean, no, kidding. In other cities, we can see bad applications of those, right? We can see, we can see things that we don't necessarily love on the application, whether that's on-street parking in a private right of way, you know, they, sometimes they feel very congested. And, and so what we're trying to do is create a solid application for a private right of way so that it fits our needs, fits the needs of private landowners, but doesn't create kind of a bad rap for us. So that's, that's kind of the thing, the thought process that went into this. The first question that always comes to mind, are we doing it for those developers? Are we, are we, were the developers saying, hey Trevor, change your private right of way so that my development goes in easier? That's, that is not the case. It wasn't developed or initiated or led. It was something that had come because of development requests or conversations we had with potential development, but it wasn't a request from the developers, it wasn't something that was influenced by them. It was something that we saw as an inconsistency, something that was a little bit hard to define within our code, if you can believe that. And so we wanted to make sure we had a good definition lying behind there. Does it help developers? It will help any landowner that wishing to utilize their property. For example, like I just said, if you had acreage in an agricultural zone that you wanted to subdivide to your family, it would create the opportunity to create a smaller right of way rather than a public street inside your property that would have to be maintained by the city itself. Now, it doesn't facilitate more density, it provides flexibility of development. So density is, there's a lot of factors in that, in the code. For example, setbacks and size of the land that is there, all of those contribute into, into the density calculation and the ability for a developer to maximize their density on a property. However, what it does is it, it determines kind of how rather than how many, right? So in the case of a private right of way being used for townhomes, if the private right of way wasn't available, then they would still be able to maximize their density using the setback requirements and everything else, just perhaps with a different product, like a garden-style walk-up apartment or, or, you know, whatever fits within the code, that style of building. So, so it doesn't, it doesn't limit the density, it just allows the developer to use the density in maybe more appealing ways that we would want as a city. For instance, townhomes are typically more attractive look than single fam, I mean, not single family, nope, than a garden-style walk-up, right? So it just allows for some flexibility there.
Oh my gosh.
I added this one. Because I felt the mayor asking this question. Can't we just use the flip in PUD? Absolutely, we can, right? We can use the PUD ordinance right now as it is. However, one, one consideration with the PUD is that is designed for a conversation to be a little bit more nimble in our code, especially when it relates to density. It allows a developer to request more density for a project within a PUD, right? If they meet certain requirements for open space or landscaping, we can grant them ten percent in each case additional density. So in a PUD, they could get up to twenty percent more density in a project area utilizing a private road. What we've seen a lot and what we've heard a lot from the city council and planning commission is that we want to rely on our zones to dictate our development. We want to look at what the zone is requiring and go off of that. So by allowing the underlying zone to dictate the, the style of street would help keep the zones within the required density, right? It wouldn't open the door for that, that density conversation in a PUD. PUD, I see that as kind of like a step under development agreement, that we have some negotiation tools allowable, that we give them some allowances on where they can actually build on their property, they can conglomerate different property, create open space and then densify one portion of the property using a PUD versus utilizing the underlying zone, it keeps it within the allowed uses and so forth. Why the hoopy would the city want private roads? Well, that, that's a, that's a few different answers there. So ongoing maintenance is a main concern. So snowplow, pothole maintenance, all of those general utility, street utility maintenance that happens, we would be responsible for those, those services within, within the zones that if we didn't allow private right of ways, we would be responsible for all of that. So all of those roads now go onto our books, that creates more of a strain on our resources. Typically, in an R seven zone that has maybe a higher traffic use because there's more dense use on that, so there's more vehicles, so the roadways can degrade at a larger rate than if it was in a single-family orientation. And so we would end up having to replace and visit those roads more frequently than a single-family, taking away from resources in that instance. Does this mean that darn townhomes are going everywhere? No. Zoning restricts development more than private roads restricts development, right? So we, in our general plan, we don't have a large portion that is slated for R seven. And so there's not going to be a large impact for, for private right of ways in an R seven zone or an RP zone. Those are smaller impact areas in the, in the city. And so the general plan shows the implementation of options A, B, or D will not substantially impact, be substantially impactful within the city because it's such a small pockets of areas that are, that are out there. But they are so fucking tiny, right? That's the, that we always think there, these are the freaking tiniest roads that we can ever see. So let's, I think it helps in seeing the drawing side by side, because I'm a visual person. So here's our standard local street section, it is a seventy-foot right of way. But in that seventy-foot right of way, there's a lot of things contained in there. You know, there's the, the street, there's curb gutter, sidewalk. Um, you know, there's this, the, the street, there's curb gutter, sidewalk, and park strip, and a, and a small portion of easement after the, the sidewalk, for that total seventy-foot right of way. The street itself in that seventy-foot right of way is thirty-six feet, um, for, for a standard development. As we look at the cross-sections that are being proposed in this ordinance, um, we have our fifty-foot right of way, which seems substantially smaller because it's twenty feet smaller than the seventy right of way. However, when we look at the street section of that, of, that private right of way, it's a thirty-two foot, uh, street width. So it's a four-foot loss on a, on a, on a street width rather than, um, a twenty-foot loss, right? Uh, so it's a little, that's, that's two feet on either side. Um, pretty much like a bike lane, right, if you wanna think, think of it in that way. Uh, and then as we go to the thirty-two foot right of way, um, that is, that is ridiculous, that's like thirty-eight feet less. Uh, when we look at that, uh, it is the, the right of way, so the street itself is twenty-six feet. So it is ten feet less, but that is, uh, the parking lanes basically on either side of the road, which we've accounted for by saying that if we implement a, a thirty-two foot right of way, we would not allow on-street parking. Because that would limit the, the lane of travel, uh, for us, so that we can, we can hone on, on some of those bad experiences that we've seen of people parking on a twenty-six-foot street, uh, and creating an impossible way to get through, uh, a road. It, we're mostly concerned about the emergency vehicle access as well. Uh, we want our fire trucks to be able to go down that, that way. Um, and so a twenty-six-foot right of way is, um, it meets fire code. Um, that is the, the, the minimum width that you can get on a curve for a fire, uh, for the fire code. And so we felt comfortable that that was a good width for the entire sections, just so we had the wiggle room there. When we get down to the twenty-two-foot right of way, that seems really tiny, um, it is a twenty-foot street. Now, this one would be only applicable in an agricultural zone because, um, this would be allowing somebody to access multiple, uh, parcels if they want to sep- separate their land for their family, um, without an impact to the city in, in cul-de-sacs. If you look, I mean, I've, I've done, uh, responses to plowing and winter parking requirements, um, for a long time, and I'm sure you've heard your, your fair share of complaints of, uh, people not getting plowed. Majority of those complaints typically come from cul-de-sacs or dead ends because they, uh, they are the lowest priority, um, in, in the plowing. So creating a lot of these little dead ends through, um, private right of way, I mean, public right of ways would exacerbate that problem for us. So creating a private right of way situation then allows them to maintain that right of way themselves, um, and, and gives them access to their property, and they have the, the ability to use their property.
I don't believe we've ever had complaints from cul-de-sacs.
You've never had a com- that's, you are lucky.
Just kidding.
I, I would say that's my top one that I've heard. Um, at this point, did, are there any, any other concerns, any other expletives you wanna throw my way?
Just in general, it may be basic, but I wanna make sure I'm understanding. Private road, the city would not plow, would not be responsible, if there's potholes or everything, the private residents take care of all that.
Yeah, and in the, in the, or, in all of the draft ordinance that allow a private right of way, they would be responsible to create an HOA that would, or, or like, uh, body that would maintain those roads. And so as a city, we would be able, if we get complaints, we'd be able to, um, contact that HOA and say, hey, we've received a lot of complaints about your roads, um, and, and have that conversation that way.
And then the other question, you know, the options you show, are they standardized in the state? Are they ones that we just came up with? I mean, oh, do you have a fifty and a thirty-six and a twenty-two?
I'll let Brandon.
I, I'm not sure that I could say there's a standard, really, across the state, as far as a cross-section goes. But the, the twenty-six was, um, I think, trying to align with the fire code as the minimum width there.
Fire code allows a twenty-foot right of way, and then on curves, it has to be a twenty-six foot right of way, or twenty-six foot street, sorry. I always, I try not to interchange those words, they're not interchangeable. Ha- so that's kind of where we looked at, is that the minimum required by fire code was twenty feet. Or allowed by fire code is twenty feet, twenty-six feet was the minimum curvature. And so that's kind of where we got those two, the first two, two numbers. The, um, the, the fifty-foot right of way was, um, a calculation based on lanes of travel and the ability to park on, on that while still leaving enough space for lanes of travel.
Thank you.
Any other questions or, I, I just have one tiny thing.
I, I've heard question, or complaints from, um, these, uh, P U Ds or, um, H, or HOAs. Um, where they have come to the city and said, we can no longer maintain these roads, uh, will the city take that on? Uh, has that happened here in South Weaver before?
Uh, to my knowledge.
It has?
We can, we always have the ability to say no in that situation.
That was one of the, that was one of the first conversation pieces that staff had when it came to private right of way was that very scenario, uh, without some type of standard. It's easy to maybe feel forced, uh, at some point in the future for a, for a private road or HOA or whoever to come forward and say, we, we don't wanna maintain this city, we need you to. And to Trevor's point, that, that's a city decision. Without any kind of standard, uh, that would be a very difficult conversation in terms of the city wanting to own it, we wouldn't wanna own it. And honestly, the only reason we would allow private roads in this, in this instance, or, or with these parameters was with the idea of we don't ever want to take them over. We would have to hold true to that feeling of, we're allowing a private road so that it's functional for them, not so that it would become a city standard. One way to think of it is, and we did think of it at one point like this as staff, was if the city was gonna take the stance of maybe in the future, we would consider taking on a private road and be, turning it to public, we would want it to meet city standard. So, we would just put city standard and require any private right of way to be city standard. Well, then there's no need for it to be private right of way. Eh, eh, there's no incentive in any way, there's no desire, there's no reason for that to become a private right of way if we are requiring it to be the exact same as a public right of way. They, the developer, the property owner, would just simply turn that over to the city for all of the maintenance and all of the costs associated with it. So, um, there's no reason to make it a, the exact same standard as a city standard. But it does mean the city would need to hold to that philosophy and just say, we don't take on private right of way. And if they didn't plan, they didn't charge enough as an HOA, that's unfortunate, but that, that wouldn't be our concern at that point.
One thing to note with, with what the cross-sections are proposing and what, um, for future development is that while the, it wouldn't be a city standard right of way, the city, the city construction standards for that road would still be met, so that it would require the same underlying, the same width of, of asphalt, the same curb and gutter, uh, same sidewalk, that we would require in any city standard-sized road.
So the quality of the road would be the same, we're requiring the same quality of road, not the same size.
Thank you.
With, um, our planning commission, uh, discussion, eh, Brandon Jones, uh, issued some engineers' notes, those were implemented in the, the recommendation, and so they're implemented in, um, option A and option B as the recommendation. If, um, if the council chooses opt- option C, D, or E, we would need to, um, we can add those, those, uh, additions as we need to. Uh, one example, uh, is ensuring that a sidewalk doesn't have to cross a road to connect a public right of way. So having, if it's in a, uh, RP zone, uh, residential patio zone, then the sidewalk would have to connect to a public right of way on the same side of the street that it's currently on. There's also omission of ten dash eleven dash six, uh, section C, which is redundant language, if we consolidate the code and move it to title eleven so that all of it's housed in one spit spot, so that we're not having to jump to different sections of the code to ma- ensure that it's, it's taken care of. Um, and those are reflected in option A and option B as well. Then there's just a general question of, we don't currently have a definition of public street, that's not included in the ordinance tonight, but that would be a consideration for a future, um, future discussion if we need to update our definitions on, on streets and. Any questions on Brandon's notes there? Okay, so I will just, I will talk about the, the differences and the similarities of each option. Option A is the, um, original proposal that we, it submitted to the planning commission, um, allowing it everywhere but RM, RL, M, and RL. One major revision was requiring the commercial industrial loans to follow the RP standards, but disallow on, on-street parking in these areas. So what that means is that the width of the road would be the same as RP, but we would still have a requirement that they couldn't have on-street parking in those zones. In manufacturing, industrial, uh, commercial zones, that, that makes a lot of sense to not have that for loading purposes or general transportation purposes, so, uh, that was a consideration there. Um, the number of units allowed in option A, it was removed in option A and the code references to South Weaver City Public Works standard drawings, um, which will have the cross deck, sections was included. Uh, the size and finish requirements are s- stripped from the P U D and reference the underlying zone allowances on option A. So what that means is that, um, what's allowed in R seven, RP, uh, agricultural, those would all follow the zoning requirements as it relates to the P U D. So if you're doing a P U D that doesn't have an R seven, then you wouldn't be allowed to do a twenty-six-foot street. You would only, eh, and if it's an RM, you wouldn't be allowed a private right of way at all. Um, so it just, it, it keeps those within the zones so that we don't end up with random private streets everywhere. That, that could, w- we've seen how r- private right of ways in single-family residential zones tend to complicate future development and future, future plan, so we wanted to limit that. Option B is a lot like option A, however, this version, R seven, does not allow private right of ways. Option C, this option will only allow private right of ways within P U Ds and gives the P U D options for any of the cross-section sizes provided in the city standard drawings. The size and finish requirements are stripped from the P U D and reference, runs, reference the underlying zone allowances, which would reference back to the city standards. Option D, this option is similar to option A and confines the P U D portion of option C. So, basically, option A with the P U D allowing any type of private right of way um, within, within the project. The main difference is that option, that option requires a thirty-two-foot street for an R seven, but this allows parking. So it ups the size of R seven, but this allows the parking. And then option E, this, um, basically has removed any option of res- residential private right of way within the city code. So that is the end of the presentation, it's, it's up to you to discuss. Um, we can pull up the ordinances if you wanna look at them closer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Trevor. All right, comments or questions by the council?
Did the planning commission have a preferred option?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that at the beginning. Planning commission, uh, recommended option A or option B at your pleasure.
Could you put those back over there, so we can see the difference?
So.
Thank you.
The main, the main discussion, but when, in the planning commission, and anybody can correct me if I state this wrong, was whether or not you should have a private right of way in an R seven, that's why option A and B were recommended, cause it was going down the path of A. And then, eh, in the motion, they put option B in as well. Um, and so, it was whether or not you should allow it in R seven. Cause the only residential zones we're really allowing it in would be R, in option A would be R seven and agricultural.
And RP.
Oh, and RP, sorry.
Plus all of the commercial and industrial zones.
I, I meant residential though, that's.
Yep.
And can you clarify why there are two recommendations and not one?
The, the planning commission was split, and so it was a compromised decision to recommend both A and B.
There were only four members.
There was only four members that night.
So for clarification, um, option A, we have R seven ag and patio, and option B, we just have ag and patio, right?
Correct, as residential option.
As residential.
And, and my concern if we, I mean, I, I actually prefer option A. My concern if we exclude it from R seven, you're gonna end it, I mean, we only have a few R seven zones anyway, but you will end up with just an alternate proposal. You'll just, instead of a, a drive that we don't wanna send a plow down anyway, you're gonna end up with a short fifteen-foot drive in a parking lot with parking going into townhomes or something that's R seven. I, I, I don't think it changes anything, it's just going to change it from an owner-provided parking lot or something different versus a street. And I don't know that, I, I, I would prefer to have the private drive. One, I don't want the city maintaining it through a HOA anyway. I don't think that's what we should be doing. So I, I prefer option A. The only thing I was questioning, and I, Brandon, do we know how wide Freedom Landing's street is currently?
Twenty-six.
I believe it's twenty-six.
I don't know about the rest of you, but that seems a little narrow.
Is that pavement, twenty-six?
That's twenty-six.
Twenty-six feet of pavement.
Pavement, and not.
So it ma- it matches section B.
Do they have sidewalks over there?
They do. But their sidewalks are immediately adjacent to the back of the curb and gutter.
So no park strip? No park strip?
No park strip.
Does it allow on-street parking there?
No.
But that's the problem, is they, they do. And it's, and it's very narrow, and they, they, they struggle with parking. So that's why, I mean, I, I support option A with possibly widening that to thirty or something different.
I have a few questions and then some feedback.
Okay.
It's okay if I just go for it all, okay. Um, I didn't see a definition for private road or private right of way anywhere in here.
Page sixty-one.
Page sixty-one.
It has a definition, top definition of private road, it's ten dash one dash ten, cause I looked for that same thing. But it does not specify the width, it just says.
So that's our previous code, but for our new code, did we, cause this is the ones that we scratch out later. Did we recreate a new one for it when we have our?
No, as I'm sitting here, we did not do that, so we would need to.
I definitely think we.
It doesn't remove that definition though, right?
We didn't scr- we didn't cross that definition now.
Ten-one-ten isn't removing the red line. Sorry, I'm trying to go through the, the what's redlined and what's updated and what, and the different options, it's hard to jump back and forth. Cause when I looked at the ordinances, uh, or the red line, sorry. Now I can't remember what's being removed and what's being kept in, cause we have on page seventy, nope, sorry, that's not right. We have Brandon Jones's note on page seventy-one, and he mentions where is the definition of private street found. And that's on a red line section, so maybe that's where I thought ten dash one dash ten is being redlined. I guess that's my question, is ten-one-ten being redlined?
No, that will.
No, okay, so that definition is standing, okay.
Um, do you feel like that's a sufficient definition? Are, are you questioning that?
I'm jumping back up to it to read it again, but no, I'm, I thought that got redlined, so thanks for that clarification. Okay, I feel like that's sufficient. Um, just for the record, definitions are hard to think of on the spot, you have to be really thorough with definitions. So, take that for what it's worth, um.
To the extent it brings you some comfort, Haley, uh, ten dash one dash ten is the general definition section, and I think it's taken from the list that we.
From the list that we created, okay, perfect. Um, geez, I have a few here. Okay, so Trevor, you mentioned in code sometimes that you're giving us something to hate. I don't hate this. I just think that we need to look into a couple more things considering here. Um, so if one of the the discussions that we've had, and I've been able to spike with just about every staff member here. It's about, you know, the amount of public streets that we have and that we maintain them. Um, and so private roads are able to help us not have that maintenance. But I was curious as to why, if one of that is to do that, then why have we removed it from all of the residential zones? Um, minus the RP and R seven. So currently, right now, we can have per planning commission discretion in agricultural, residential low, residential moderate, and. What am I missing? RL. But now we're taking it out of those areas and putting it into just agriculture R seven. Would it not be beneficial to continue to keep it in those zones if we are hoping to have less streets to maintain?
Well, I can answer that. I think that the the only reason that we would allow for a private road. Is in a case where they maybe want a little bit smaller road. And so in the single-family zones, we want the full-width road that allows for on-street parking and all of that. There's, I don't know of any developer that's going to propose to do a a private road that's a full city standard width. There's just, there's no, there's no benefit to that.
Right, absolutely. I'm just wondering, are we? I see this in two different ways. In one way, we are wanting to attract a lot of single-family development here. We want the lower-density zones, but in our own way, we're almost punishing those who choose to do them. Because we're requiring them to do a seventy-foot right-of-way with no other option. But we are requiring the higher densities that we don't necessarily want, the option for a private road. But more specifically, I'm thinking of those who do have parcels of land, families that would like to create. You know, a a how, a subdivision within them, and I I know that right now it's just the two lots, but. I think it's worth looking at into if we want to allow those residents who would like to do a private road for more than two lots. That ability, as long as it doesn't interfere with our transportation map or other. Transportation statewide or whatever. You understand what I'm saying?
Well, one thing to maybe have a framework of a thought process of a smaller road in a in a residential zone. If you look at Cannon Drive just behind uh City Hall, that's a thirty-two-foot right-of-way, or thirty-two-foot street. With no sidewalk in most cases. And so just the feel of that, that that has become kind of a main.
So are you talking about the property just behind Canyon Drive to the east of Canyon Drive?
Just all of Canyon Drive from thirteen seventy-five uh on to seventeen fifty east. Um, all of that is is.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm thinking Canyon Meadows. I'm in a completely, gotcha.
So right behind City Hall, so right out here is a is is a thirty-six-foot road. Back at Canyon Drive is a thirty-two foot. If you want to kind of feel a reference, that that would help.
And I can understand where you have, you know, twenty, thirty homes, that would not be beneficial. But I'm wondering for those families who would like to split their property or just maybe four lots or whatnot. We're really only giving them the option to do a seventy-foot right-of-way. And really not affordable for residents who do want to build a single-family home on just a small amount of lot. We've removed that option from them. Or currently, they do have that option, and I'm not sure that I think that that would be beneficial for citizens to remove that option. On on page, oh, I didn't write it down. We have. We're changing it so our PUD will allow it to be public or private. And I'm wondering, why would we do that? It states that. I'm sorry, I wish I had my page number here. I tried to get all my notes together.
A PUD currently can be public or private.
Do we want to keep it that way? I found it. It's page seventy-six. Under ten-seven, I four. Um, so we have our private roads that um as long as they don't run in. They don't follow the same with our transportation plan, we would allow them. Here, we're allowing a PUD to be public or private. And they can be private or public, sorry, as long as they're not shown on a comprehensive plan. And I'm just wondering if we should make PUDs be private only, because they shouldn't be coming in. As long as they don't go over an existing transportation plan anyway, based on this new one that we're writing. So those ones are just a little in conflict with each other, I feel.
Let me, let me look at that because I believe.
And again, some of these, I'm trying to read the red line and then trying to read what we're actually passing, so if I'm misunderstanding.
I would recommend reading the the ordinance. Twenty twenty-one dash four, option A, right-of-way.
Is that the?
That's.
Starting on seventy-nine?
Yeah.
Page seventy-nine.
So condition required in plan, uh, unit development, streets may be either public or private. That that is, that is currently in the the language. They may be required to be public if they are needed for a transportation route. As shown in a comprehensive plan, or if so determined by the approving body. If the streets are public, then they shall meet the applicable requirements of Public Works standard drawings. Private streets shall meet the provisions of underlying zones. So that would mean that. They can do private streets, but they have to meet the provisions in the underlying zones of the PUD. But otherwise, they are allowed a public street, they just have to meet city standards and they can't have, they can't. Be. Part of a our overall transportation general plan. That makes sense.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if if we want to have that be a public option for them. In a PUD, or if they should be private. Again, if we're trying to steer private roads to be private and and loosen our. Amount of public routes that we have, then I would see that as a beneficial change for the goal that we're trying to accomplish here.
Well, PUDs can be all level of density in all zones.
According to the planning commission.
Well, according to our code, right? We have examples within our own city of PUDs that are. Single-family homes with large, large right-of-way that's public. It doesn't. You know, for example, Harvest Park was just, which was just developed, that's a, that's a PUD. And a PUD is simply a section of code that provides additional requirements, but also additional options. And and flexibility for the developer. It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily dictate ownership. Um, I think a lot of times people think of an HOA tied directly to a PUD, and that that's not the case.
Not always the case.
Yes, those are not the same thing. And so a PUD is is just a a section of code. That provides additional requirements that a developer has to meet in order to get certain things. So for example, you know, Trevor brought that up, but most of the time, a developer wants to do a PUD. In order to gain additional density and provide flexibility of where that density is located. So it it's a cluster of density with larger open space, but that's not dictating whether it's a public or private road.
Gotcha. I'm, so I'm just to understand clearly, if it's a PUD and it's a public road, they're going with the seventy-foot right-of-way. If it's a PU and it's private, then it will go with this option or this on this street thing of A, B, or C.
Right. But that wouldn't change the density.
You're right, yes. So that was, that was another thing I was gonna point to, is is you mentioned, you know, they can have additional density in PUDs. But it is up to the planning commission's discretion, which is also a thing that is current with our current code regarding private roads. It's up to the planning commission's discretion, and we remove that ability. And I was just wondering if there's a reason why we would want to remove that ability from our planning commission?
Uh, the, we had that discussion in planning commission about um about having negotiable items. There. There's a sentiment that we we want to limit as many negotiable items as we can uh to stay out of the development. Agreement process. If that's, if that's a different attitude that the city council wants to to open the doors to have that negotiation. That is something that we could add, definitely add in there. Um, but the idea of of just having it be allowed within the zone. And so it doesn't open the door for negotiation and and because whenever we're discussing, like, for instance, on the. The in a PUD for density, if we disallow them, if they put a whole lot of work into their landscape. But still disallow the the density, then we we should probably have a good reasoning behind disallowing the the density. Percentage increase. And so we would want to make sure that we have all of that kind of fleshed out. So it was a discussion, the planning commission felt that it wasn't something that they wanted to have a negotiable item. It was just something that wanted to be found within the zone.
Okay. Um, just another question I had is the prior private street, there was an easement of twenty feet on either side. Um, and I'm not seeing there's an easement, and I, is that because it's required to have the public utilities beneath the road? Is that what that was?
You don't have to dictate that here. The public utility easement is in another part of the code. I don't remember where it is.
The twenty feet still applies on either side, or is it just?
No, typically, they're just ten.
Ten, okay.
I I can't answer why in there it says twenty. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that was one thing, because the in in a PUD, it requires a forty-one-foot. Curb-to-curb private road, and then a an additional twenty-foot easement on either side. And we didn't really understand why it was an eighty-one-foot right-of-way at that point, it seems. Which is larger than our seventy-foot right-of-way.
Right. If we have the provision in here where it's showing twenty feet redlined. Do we have it ten feet somewhere else in our code, or do we not have it anywhere else in our code?
I'd have to research where the the PUE is required, but public utility easement. It, that's, that's more a requirement out of necessity for a look, to provide a location for your dry utilities. Uh, power, gas, communications. Ten feet is 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 kind of the standard. I don't really see any need to jump into that and change anything. But the twenty-foot requirement in the PUD is just weird.
Okay.
Sounds like it may have been a typo, maybe they meant twenty feet total.
In, in eleven dash four dash four, streets easements and numbers.
Currently or proposed?
Currently.
Which page?
This is just on city code, so it's not in the packet, but eleven dash four dash four, um, section. I, it, utility easements, the planning commission may require that easements for drainage and other utility services. Through during private property be provided by the subdivider, easements of not less than fifteen feet in width. For water, sewers, drainage, and other retailers shall be provided when required by the planning commission. And then public utility easements is under that in section M. Or where required, public utility easement shall not be less than ten feet in width for power, gas, communication lines, et cetera.
Perfect, that's, I just wanted to make sure it was noted somewhere.
Still be in the code.
Okay. And then on page, again, trying to make sure I'm looking at the right one, on page.
Can I make one clarification as well? When you were talking about the bonus density, that's part of the PUD section, and that's not changing. That idea.
Right, yes, I was just saying that when we say they get more, more density, they don't get it automatically. It's up to the planning commission's discretion.
And that remains the same if it's a PUD.
Um, on page seventy-seven, number D, letter D. Um, it says that it does not, the the rights-of-way maintenance, the city won't be responsible for anything, any upkeep or surface improvement. And then it says it does not guarantee mail or garbage collection services will extend to the residences on such streets. If we do this in an R seven or patio zone, is that not something we want the developer to make sure they take care of for those residents?
That that is in current code, that portion. So if we want to change that, we can, but that's. Yeah, that that was just in the current code, so I didn't change that portion.
I I would think that that was something that we want to want to make sure, especially if we allow it in a, in an R seven zone, because. I don't think most residents move in not thinking they have garbage services. Um, and then. Just, just one thing that I had to say regarding Freedom Landing and kind of what Blair just mentioned, as far as if we go with no on-street parking. I really feel like if that's something that the council feels that we want to have private streets in R seven. Then we need to visit our visitor parking code, because we're gonna have cars parked there anyway. And so if we're going to allow these narrow streets in there and no on-street parking, then we need to redress our code. Regarding visitor parking to make sure that they have enough, because they never do. So. I I I would like to personally, I think, would like to table this, just because there's a couple things, for example, I think we should be allowing this for the. Look, the lower-density zones, um, especially four or five lots or less. I hate to take that provision away from our residents. And just a couple of the things that we talked about, look into. If we don't want to do R seven and and go with option B where we don't want to do an uh. Private right-of-way in R seven, I think another option we could look into is revising our PUD. And allowing, like for right now, PUDs are on, what, five acres or more? Maybe lowering that acreage down, if we would like that to be something that they could have. Um, I think, I think there's other options. We could just either tweak a little bit or look at somewhere different and still accomplish the same goal.
Just, yeah, okay. So just for reference on the lower-density zones. Right now, our code, unless it gets put in a PUD, you can only service two residences off a private right-of-way. So you wouldn't be able to do four or five residences.
Right, right. Right now, it's two. I understand that. I'm just saying, if we go forward with either of these options, it's none. We've removed that option completely. So I, that's not something I want to see. I don't know about the rest of them. And if you guys want to stay at two, that's fine with me, but I just think there are those families that would like that opportunity, so. I think that's all my, my two cents. I think it's about fifteen cents at this point, but there you go.
Hey, I think Kelly brings up some good points. Um, I'm, I'm the same, about putting names to to property, but I could see a. A family could have an acre or an acre and a half, or maybe they want to put four on there. It doesn't make sense to have to put a seventy-foot right-of-way just to service four homes. Uh, they may want to have that private o- option, but if we eliminate it using schedule A or schedule option A or B, they can't do that. They have to put a public street in. I I can use like the Cook compound, one of the cooks who've got their homes in there. That's a perfect example. That's a private drive. Why shouldn't they have that option? Why shouldn't some of the other uh legacy families that have property here do something like that? Rather than turn it over to a developer that make it a big. I get it if you've got, you know, several acres. And you're gonna have tens and twenties of homes in there, well then, yeah, it needs to be a public right-of-way. But if it's just a small area, so maybe there's a an option A one, you know, where you can have it in the RLs, RLMs. If the the lot size, the acreage is an acre or less, or acre and a half or less, or something like that, you could have a private road. Those are the type of things I think could be worked into it rather than black and white, you know, don't be it's all stark. Or rigid, I think was the word used earlier.
If I could, just from my own perspective, um, as we were working on this, it, from the staff. I can see now that there's, there's a gap there, but my, my feeling, I I guess in what I. I kind of was thinking we were proposing, but I can see now that it's not in there, was that for those zones, for RM, RL, RLM. That they would be allowed um to do it, obviously, if it was a PUD. Under that, under a PUD.
PUD is five acres or more, and most of these properties we're considering would be smaller than that.
But you could, so what you could do is just change that acreage, maybe down to two or something like that in the PUD. And then we would have to change our. The table, but then in those zones, you would allow it, but only in a PUD. Not straight from the zone, only in a PUD. And and I think the reason, at least from my perspective. It would be a very rare scenario with a standard subdivision where you would want it to be a private road. Because keep in mind, a private road is not owned by the city, so they could be gated. They they're, you know, those are the types of things, and you, in in a standard subdivision, I think. I think we want those to just be open public roads where, you know, people can go wherever they want to go, because they're public. They're not blocked off or gated or anything like that. So that's kind of where I think my perspective is. Uh, you can, you can allow certainly, because I I agree with what you're saying as far as, you know, somebody having a small amount of property and it's zoned RM. There's, I think there's no reason why they couldn't have a a private road for just a couple. There's, I think there's no reason why they couldn't have a a private road for just a couple of lots, but I think then they should be doing it under the P U D. I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn from the other staff members, but.
Uh, yeah, I I think one of the main concerns when we, when I was crafting the code was. Was opening the door to having multiple fa- of flag lots. Along our state street corridor, our state, sorry, our South Weaver Drive corridor. Um, we have a lot of remnant agricultural lots along that corridor. Allowing them to to create that private right-of-way then creates more access onto South Weaver Drive. Um, perhaps they would even get pushed back from U dot to even put that access onto South Weaver Drive. And so uh to facilitate maybe better um, better continuity. That was the the conscious decision to not include it in into lower density zones other than agriculture, because we saw the need. For the agriculture lots, as we looked at the overall zoning map, that seemed like that was the most feasible option for. Uh, lots subdivisions for legacy families uh versus those lots that were already zoned R M. That would be um, remnant parcels of point seven five to point nine acres apiece. So that was one one consideration in looking at that.
Hey Brenna, I just have a question for you. Um, why would you want them to go P U D if they were, you know, a family, one or two or three lots?
Well.
I mean, could we, could we keep the same provision that's that's in this proposed one to keep, make them go H O A? Would that accomplish the same goal that you're going there? Okay.
It would. Sorry. I I guess that's true. Ag- again, to David's earlier comment, a P U D does not necessarily.
Right.
Correspond with an H O A. And so as long as there's an H O A, that's really all that that matters.
P U D would allow them to mask the homes differently too, so they would be able to mask the homes a little bit differently than than in the standard zone.
I think typically you want a P U D to be a little bit larger. Um, a P U D that's only two acres doesn't make a whole lot of sense, actually. Based on what a P U D accomplishes with the variation of sizing and and where density can be located within that project area. Once it's a little bit bigger project area, then the value of being able to mask the density differently and create more open space. That's essentially the trade-off in the in the P U D ordinance. Uh, if we had to pinpoint what it is the developer gets, the property owner, what it is the city gets. The developer gets more density in a smaller area and the city gets larger open space. And when I say the city. I think sometimes we think of the city as the organization and the financial responsibility that we have. When we say the city in that regard, we're talking about the residents of that area. The residents of that area would get more open space nearby them.
Yeah.
So.
So, yeah, I think it would probably be a better option.
Doesn't quite make sense.
Yeah, to to put it, to put the private road back into the lower densities. I think we have, we don't allow flag lots currently. Am I correct in that?
We don't allow typical flag lot, but we do, it's it's very nuanced, and so it's very difficult, but you could make it work. You, as long as there's enough space for a private road that is thirty feet. You can put a foot thirty-foot road back into the property as long as the they meet the zoning requirements for setbacks and lot widths. Um, so there there are some examples that we've done that. It doesn't happen very often. Again, I think a lot of our masking on these some, these lots. For R N and R L M lie along the corridor that are um, that are remnant parcels, so. Um, but yeah, that that's how they would do it, and then it wouldn't be a flag lot. It would be, the frontage would be. Now on this new private road. So it's just kind of.
Yeah, new developments end up being a different conversation than kind of redevelopment. And this idea of um, maybe having a home or a parcel and wanting to have one or two around you. Is kind of a redevelopment idea or a or an infill development idea. The larger parcels and the larger tracks that develop, you know, Brennan used the phrase standard subdivision. Those, and Wayne, you talked about tens and twenties of homes, those larger lots, um, there there are those larger project areas, multiple lots. It it's just a different animal and a different need. And so the idea of a flag lot, when you say more than two. You're you're now essentially creating the option of of kind of three or four flag lots off of that same private drive. But our code does require you to have a large enough parcel to divide it and still meet all of the zoning code. And so there is a little bit of a protection there, that you're not creating multiple smaller lots that don't need zoning code. You still have to meet zoning code. Um, but right now, like you said, it's limited to.
So if we have a family that has three acres and they want to put five homes on it. What's their best option for that?
Depends on what zone they're in.
Well, let's say it allows it. I mean, wh- what I'm trying to get at is I I hear what Haley's saying, not all of our, to Trevor's point, not all of our land. Is on South Weaver Drive or or faces South Weaver Drive. So to plan simply based on South Weaver Drive, I feel like is a little bit of a disservice.
So one of the, one of the things we're talking about here is is a service, right? And that is a road service, a transportation network. And so one of the major, one of the major service levels that comes in a transportation network is connectivity. So the provision in the code that talks about uh making sure that those major transportation networks are maintained through development. And through, you know, our general planning and our capital facility plan and and all of that uh planning documents that go into place. We don't want to create a situation where there's a whole bunch of cul-de-sacs, private or public, right? Because transportation as a service is a is a connectivity discussion. And that actually creates a lower level of service by creating a whole bunch of cul-de-sacs, whether they're public or private. The public or private conversation is is a maintenance conversation. And what I'm adding is of service conversation and the purpose of a road network. And so that that's, I think, a layer that maybe we haven't discussed too much, but there are, there are circumstances where you need to access an area. Whether that's, you know, the five lots on three acres or or in R seven or whatever it may be. That is a, an area that doesn't need seventy feet to access it. Or if you do require seventy feet, it it actually doesn't become a desirable development or a desirable project. And so having a a a width of access that is not publicly owned, it's privately owned. But still can get into those areas and allow use of that land for those property owners, I think is what we're trying to achieve. Without sacrificing the connectivity of a of a larger transportation network.
So out of curiosity, with um. Oh, I guess Freedom Landing, and I I asked Brandon this. He wasn't certain, so I'm looking right at you, but I forget, I've already asked you this. Uh, who does their garbage services and how does that work based on, was that based on the fact that they're a P U D, the fact that they're an H O A? Like, where, at what point in time do we decide what they're going to do with their trash services? Do you know?
That's not something I have ever thought about.
I I don't know for sure. Um, I think, I think in general, if it's a private road. Then they privately contract that, but I don't know if I'm stating that out of turn. I don't know if South Weaver provides garbage collection service to Freedom Landing.
I know for Saddlewood, they drive in the little half circle and around.
I think they have their, the city collects their garbage, but I could, I'm just going out of my bad memory.
I was just.
Shady may be able to answer that.
Pick it up on the street?
I think it would be determined if they have individual addresses, not unit numbers.
So that was just a.
They have physical addresses.
Okay.
That was just a question I had regarding the preliminary plan for the gateway was, they didn't have collection bins within the the uh R seven area. But I wasn't sure if they were gonna need to roll those garbage cans out onto South Weaver Drive, or if they, if a waste management was going to drive in and and pick it up from their curb. But that's something that would be. What did I say?
Waste management, different company. We don't contract with them.
So I, when I saw that, um, you know, that the, we don't guarantee garbage collection services or or whatnot. But that was just something that I had a concern about, was something that we we need to make sure that we, especially if we go R seven and we're talking. You know, sixty-two plus units. We need to make sure they know how to get taken care of their trash.
For sure.
Could, and and I I mean, I don't care if we table this or how we how we deal with it, but couldn't we also add, like Wayne was suggesting, you got an A. One or whatever, another option to solve some of your issues. And I didn't want to bring it up because I'm one of those outlier properties. And it sounds self-serving to me, but if you say that you allow that on a five-acre and under parcels. That gets rid of, because there are a lot of parcels throughout South Weaver, not just on South Weaver Drive, a lot of remnant parcels. Mine being one of them, that is a small parcel that one day won't be be agricultural.
Yes, it will. It will always be.
And and as long as I'm there, it will be agricultural. And so, but I mean, it is, it is a, you know. It doesn't make a lot of sense to have the city maintain a little road that goes in and out of a little parcel. I mean, you can already see my second driveway is a small, it's not seventy feet wide, but yet you can, you could even park two vehicles on it. So I I don't know. I mean, I I think it would be an easy solution to say it's allowed on certain par- parcels. Under five acres or whatever, and upon planning commission and city council approval.
I I do personally like that ability to have it based on their.
Yeah.
Discretion, because it it really allows you the flexibility depending on some parcels, it's gonna work great, and others, it's just not going to work. And I I I don't know how, if planning commission says they don't want that, I I'm not sure if we just say, okay, based on city council or or what. But I think that that is a worthwhile component to keep in our code, because it can allow us some flexibility depending on the parcel.
You could, you could make the motion to amend the whatever option to include that in the R M, R L M and R L. Uh, that language, right? Parcels under, or line.
I feel like, and and I don't know how everybody feels on this, but I feel like we've got a kind of a list here. I would, rather than making sure that we've hit every dot here. I would prefer to table this and bring it back up, take our thoughts here that have been discussed and bring it back to the council.
Without five options or four options, try to narrow it down to one.
Is that a motion then?
May I make a motion to table this?
Continue.
To continue this. Tell me, what is this called? Ordinance?
Private right-of-way.
Sorry, I'm trying to get here. Twenty-one dash.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, private roads.
Okay, do I have a second?
There we go.
Second.
Okay, there's most, continue in a second. Is there any further comments?
Can we include um updating our P U Ds? So it's not strictly related to five acres or more.
Well, do we want our P U D to say that, or do we want the the table to say that it, that the private right-of-way will be? Because P U Ds, you want to be larger parcels.
Well, but.
Private right-of-way to be on.
Well, I guess that depends, because I kind of gave us a couple of options there. Either we need to readjust our P U D. Or we need to look into R seven if we're going to allow a private right-of-way to increase our visitor parking. So. If we're not, if we don't.
What I'm, what I'm picturing is the private road right over by my house with a bunch of my family members. There's four point five houses attached to it. And there's enough acreage there. I don't, I don't believe it's five acres for that, but everyone benefits from that private road that they all maintain. So I hate to say, well, we can only have two in an ag zone, and I hate to say it has to be more than five acres. So I'm trying to figure out where that middle ground lies. And I don't know how to add that to our motion to a discussion.
Does that need to be part of the private road at this time?
No.
I didn't hear you say.
Do, does it need to be part of the the private road discussion at this time?
No, not necessarily, but I need to make sure, I would like to make sure it doesn't fall by the wayside and not get discussed later.
It could easily be added to the the R M, R L M very easily on that table. Right. I- if you add it to the R M, R L M, and then you change it from two lots. To four lots or something like that, does that accomplish what you're talking about? Because the acreage, again, it's based on each lot still needing the zoning requirements.
So for ag, it would be one acre lot.
But you're allowing.
So if you want to do smaller than that lots.
Can I just throw out, does it, do you even need to restrict acreage? As long as it's not a road that's needed for the connectivity element that that David was talking about.
Talking about P U Ds?
And, no, I'm talking in R L, R L, R L, and those other zones. As long as it's not one of those. Or as long as it's not needed for connectivity, eh, eh, then I think it could be a private road.
Well, as long as you're not gonna get like twenty homes and make it kind of like Canyon Drive, I guess, is what we're trying to prevent.
But as soon as you have that many homes, you need it for connectivity, so there's, you would not allow it.
That's true.
But it'd be nice if the code helped provide the parameters.
Okay, fair enough.
I don't know what Steph's got to do, but have them.
Steph, do you have your direction then?
I think I can give you six more options. No, I I.
Can you use the real swear words next time, though?
Sure.
But can I, can I really ask one other thing? Well, I'm sorry, we have, please don't make page seventy-five again. I, that was so hard to read.
Brendan, is that, is that what?
No. That, that's, sorry, just. We have a motion in a second. I'm, I apologize, mayor.
No, it's all right. I asked for further comments, so. All right, anything else? Okay, we have a motion to continue, and we have a second. Um, we'll have a roll call vote. Do we need a roll call vote? Yes. Beginning with Councilman Windsor.
Hi.
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 Motion carries unanimously. All right. Item ten, man, we were zipping through those.
I have that effect on people.
I used, I used to think Dave talked a long time.
Thank you.
All right, this is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fifteen.
David's looking at me. No, it's David. He's looking right at me like, oh, Haley talks more than me. Uh-uh, Dave, no way, no how.
I don't know. You're competing there pretty well.
I, no.
Okay, this is residential off-street parking. So during the discussion on I A D U's. Recommendation to City Council at the August Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission moved to recommend the I A D U ordinance. With recommendation to look at parking ordinance within Title ten. Parking for the I A D U, D U ordinance has been detailed in the new ordinance. And um, so now I'll turn the time over to Trevor to summarize that.
I promise this is not gonna be as as complicated. There's only one option. Uh, no, I, and then any other options you guys want to create.
Thanks for adding that.
So, uh, to meet the the concerns with I A D U's and parking requirements. This is a solution that we um have brought through the planning commission and brought to city council on the recommendation of approval. Um, to to update ten dash eight dash two off-street parking in chapter ten or title ten of our code. Um, the major, the major changes for this ordinance are items one, two, and three. Um, in in section F. In section one, we talk about, um, oh wait, section one, we did not change that. Section three, that's the major change. Sorry. One and two would say the same. Section three, except for as provided in subsection three B of the section, all off-street parking areas shall be surfaced with asphalt, concrete pavement, basinry pavers. Or comparable material and shall be graded to dispose of all surface water. Surfacing may be in, may be installed in stages as approved by the planning commission. All parking and grading plans shall be reviewed and approved by the city engineer. In section, in uh, subsection A residential parking areas, all new main residential driveways, approaches and parking spaces required by this title. Shall be surfaced with concrete, asphalt or other hard surface pavement material. And uh subsection B, gravel or crush rock may be installed for accessory parking in the residential zone and must be a minimum of four inches deep, compacted. Place the top of weed barrier and maintain completely free of grass and weeds and contained with durable orders. Um, and then uh continuing on there's the 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 code as it stands now. So the the, that's, section three is the major portion. Uh, what that does is on a new I A D U request, that counts as a new residential uh driveway. And they would be required to have a paved parking space for that I A D U um in order to make it continue with their application. Um, and then it defines, it just allows uh for for pavement. Uh, there was discussion. During the stormwater um conversation about driveways, um, if uh, if the. Division of water would have their way, they would prefer just everything to be permeable surfacing so that. so that it can stay on the property. It's not required to have a, a permeable driveway, but that, that could be the prerogative of the council if they wish to have, uh, that provision there. Uh, this, this is just to, to help answer some concerns about new ID, IADUs and the vehicles being parked on, um, surfaces that were not, uh, approved city services, which right now we don't have approved city services for driveways.
Okay, I, I have a question.
Oh, no.
Okay. All right. Um, okay, page ninety-seven. Um, okay, so it says off-street parking, parking areas, every parcel of land hereafter used as public or private parking, including commercial parking and also automobile farm equipment. Are we saying that from now forward, everyone has to park their tractors and their trailers and all of their farm equipment on concrete?
No. No, read, read that whole line. It talks about automobile farm equipment or other open-air sales lot. If you're selling those items, it would need to be a paved parking, not if you just own it for your own use. Right now, our only requirement for servicing is in commercial uses, not in residential uses. Residential uses can have any parking surfaces they want to designate as parking service.
Unless they have an accessory, accessory dwelling unit?
Right now, if they have an accessory dwelling unit, they can designate any part of their parking as the accessory dwelling unit parking.
Once this is passed, it has to be paid.
Once this is passed, it would have to be paid.
Thank you.
I have a question. B, on, on page ninety-eight, B, gravel or crushed rock may be installed for accessory parking in a residential zone, must be minimum four inches, blah, blah, blah. What is considered accessory parking?
It's not used as the main
driveway.
driveway, main, main parking requirement for residential, you know?
Okay, so just some thoughts for the council to consider. Um, when we talked about this in code committee, it was, um, a concern to us to make sure that this doesn't apply to all residents who are using, you know, off to the side of their garage or whatever parking, making them go and, and require driveways be parked there and stuff. So, B, to me, would, would like to, let's say I have an RV parked onto the side of my house. Does B require me to, um, do the blah, blah, blah on it?
Gravel.
Gravel and all that things?
No, i- it's not retroactive, so it's not.
Right, okay, but what if I'm in a new home?
But in a new home, it would.
But in a new home.
So that's what we were trying to avoid in code committee.
It should.
You think it should?
In a new home, we, we, most RV, I mean, that's, most of them are doing that now, they're, they're, I think Gary brought it up in Planning Commission, he just actually did his. I don't know if he said crushed gravel or what it was, but he just did his that way so that he could park it. I personally think it should be that way, otherwise it becomes a muddy mess. And do we want, do we want that to continue, that's some of the, the I swear complaints we get.
Okay.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, well, just for reference, one question I have, and I asked you this a couple of weeks ago. But when we talked about it in code committee, we wanted it specifically to, um, uh, not make that a requirement for every resident. And I asked you, we were hoping, what we were, what we were trying to accomplish with this, when we talked about in code committee, was to prevent an IADU user from parking on their lawn, or parking in the mud or in the weeds. But we didn't necessarily want to step on property owners' rights and make everybody do the same. And so I asked you the provision, what we were having a hard time with was being residence-specific in a residential zone. We have to, if we're gonna apply it to a residential zone, it has to be towards everybody. And I asked you if we could make it apply to those who have business license that require overnight parking. Did you check on that for me?
I did, um, we can do that. The, we want to be very careful with IADUs because the state law requires us to treat them as a single-family home. And so we wanna be very careful on how we, we handle that. So that is, that is a possibility, we can do that. But if, um, if we get challenged on that, that might be something that we may have, um, some issues to, to deal with later. So, um, we can do that, that is, that is an option to do that. We have this delicate balance of IADUs because we do require them to have a business license, to have an IADU. However, they're not a business patron, that is, they're a resident of the city. And so, while the business requires overnight parking, the resident isn't a patron of the business. And so that, that's kind of the murky area that we would wade into in that, that thought process.
Okay. One other question, all parking and grading plans shall be reviewed and approved, approved by the city engineer. Is that cost applied to the applicant, and is that something that we feel we can stay on top of?
I'll let Brandon answer that.
Anything that I do is typically passed on to, anything that is related to development or whatever, that, that, I guess, is internal to make sure that that's passed on.
Okay. Well then, for my two cents, I say we throw in the provision of business license that require overnight parking and roll the dice on it. Um, because I don't think it's fair to make all, uh, new homes pour that concrete or whatever and pay that extra fine, because we're trying to cover for specific IADUs, my two cents.
It's only if they wanna park there.
Right.
Haley, if I may.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one, one concern I would have about allowing them to park anywhere, basically anywhere on their property, um, and not require them to, to park on a, on a non-erodible surface or something like that, um, is the tracking that, that potentially they would have out onto the road, which goes back to our.
Is that illicit discharge?
Yes.
She loves that word.
Yes, that would be considered an illicit discharge, and somebody would need to report that to the hotline.
Look at that, Brandon.
I learned, will you tell Brandon two point O, I was paying attention?
That's impressive, thank you, thank you for listening.
Noted.
I'd like to, I'd like to make another note. Page ninety-seven, if we approve this, um, I love Councilmember Taylor, he holds a special place in my heart, but.
Dang it, Trevor, do you have something against me? This is the second time.
Taylor, someone, Brandon's like, no, it's fine, sorry, I thought I had changed that and I did not.
Thank you.
I didn't even catch that.
So we'll, we'll ask them.
Do I have to sit this one out then, huh?
No, we will scratch that out. Dang it.
That, that's the second time, folks, just so y'all know.
I know.
It's actually in here earlier, but we didn't pass it, that option, so.
You owe me a candy bar.
Okay, other comments or questions?
I do have one question, just on the, um, page ninety-eight, and I'm sure this has been in code for a while. Number two, the golf courses, hotel motel, one space per one point five rental units? So if the hotel is full, then there's not enough parking for everybody?
You know, Kate, I'm so glad you brought that up, because in code committee just today, I said, we need to look at this chart again and maybe review this, because some of these things don't really quite add up to our new uses and maybe what we need to do. So, Quinn, Quinn's on the same page as me.
I know it's not necessarily part of our discussion here, but it.
Well, it can be.
Copy over from somewhere. You're right, and so, I had a little concern.
Yeah, if the one space per one point five units plus any of the banquet area, right, calculation, if that equals the number of total units that could be rented. It may or may not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you like to make a suggestion there for the council to consider? Or just a recommendation that we look at that entire table?
That table is separate, pulled in, or it's all part of the same thing?
It's all part of the same ordinance, there's a portion on that table that, that we are updating with the ordinance, that, uh, section, the number one in there. So we added the one additional space per IADU. So, that table is, is open for.
I think that, that's the only thing that's changing.
That is the only thing that we've changed.
The table you see is just currently what's in there, other than that one last few words on number one.
Wayne says it's fair game.
It is fair game.
So, well, I, I, should I make a motion?
Well, I guess that depends on.
I'm not gonna ask you guys, I know what I wanna do. All right, mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fifteen with the change of, uh, the table under ten dash eight dash five C, number three to say one space per one rental unit, with the additional language the same.
What about, uh, requiring it for overnight businesses patrons only with both of those licenses?
Request denied.
I'll second that motion.
All right.
What's the motion?
Uh, ten dash eight dash five, um, subsection C in the table number three. Hotel motel lodge.
She's changing it to one space per one rental unit.
One, instead of one point five.
For each one rental unit.
I'm sorry, why are we doing this?
Because it's fair game, because it's part of this, it's an easy way to fix the code and make more parking.
Well, I feel like we need to look at this entire chart, honestly. I mean, look at number nine, or number eleven, hospital, civic building, and school determined by the planning commission. I, I feel like we probably need to just review this entire chart.
Most of those will meet, have to meet state code and building code.
Well, I don't disagree, then I'm certain the whole chart could be reviewed, that's what I saw. It was a simple fix.
It, it doesn't preclude that we can't go out and still change it.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, any other comments?
I do.
That's Blair, yeah.
Blaine.
Okay, then we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Windsor.
Hi.
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 No.
Hi.
There, and the motion carries with four ayes and one no, one, one nay. All right. With a note to look at that table and if we need to update, yep, address the issues on there.
We did add it to the code committee list of things to do, so I guess, either way, we'll get to it.
Do you want the code committee to take that, or do you want staff to review that directly?
I think staff would do a very good job. You don't want more to, to do, do you?
Eh, it's, that's great.
Yeah, we'll bring something back to the city council.
Does that go to the planning commission?
Yeah, it will, it would go to the planning commission first. Yeah, they'd provide a recommendation.
All right, uh, next ordinance, twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, title two, chapter two, recreation parks and arts or RAP tax implementation. The majority of voters were in favor of the proposition to impose a point one percent sales and use tax to fund recreations, arts, and parks, facilities, and programs. The tax was approved as certified in the election canvas on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Council wishes to begin the implementation of the RAP tax, which requires addition to the current city code. This ordinance will take effect January first, twenty twenty-two, after publication as required by law. Are there any comments or questions on this? And do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash sixteen?
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, the recreation parks and arts tax.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further comments? We'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Halverson.
Hi.
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 The motion carries unanimously. All right, um, the next item is a public hearing on a budget amendment. Since the adoption of the budget on August twenty-four, several additional items have come before the council that were not included in the original budget. These amendments address the following unforeseen expenditures. On August twenty-fourth, the Canyon Meadows Park West budget was increased to a total of one million five hundred twenty-one thousand. Davis County is making changes to its dispatch hardware and software. The fire department will be updating its alert system to be compatible with the new county system. New computer and office equipment were needed for the new community service director. Computer updates and office equipment were needed for the social media specialist. Computer and office equipment upgrades for the new city treasurer. Grant application costs for the state's additional ARPA grant program. Computer equipment upgrades for the mayor and city council, and wifi and network upgrades at the FAC. Anything you wanna add to that, Dave?
Yes, if you look at the addendum portion of the packet, um, there's one change that needs to be noted. Under the section capital projects revenues, um, the second line there of, uh, fund balance to be appropriated shows a negative four hundred and fifty-three, that is, that is incorrect, that is a typo. It's actually a plus, and the number is two hundred and ninety-three. So you'll notice that the capital projects revenue section, um, and the capital project expenditure section should, uh, equal the same thing there at the, at the, that five hundred and twenty-one is the amount that, uh, goes to Canyon Meadows Park that was adjusted. Um, that number four fifty-three is a hangover from a previous draft when there was, um, impact fee discussion taking place as part of this. Um, that has all been fixed and removed, and so that, that number, if you'll notice, the, um, two ninety-three plus the sixty-eight, um, plus the one hundred and sixty that is moving from the cherry farms over to Canyon Meadows, that gets us to the number, um, the five twenty-one. And so that, that number should be a plus two ninety-three, not minus four fifty-three. So that that adds up, if you're looking at that and trying to make it balanced, which it should.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, are there any comments or questions by council before we open a public hearing on this item? Okay, hearing, none do I have a motion to go into public hearing for the budget amendment.
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now open public hearing for budget amendment. And hearing none do I have a motion to close public hearing?
So move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are, the public hearing is closed. So we will move to resolution twenty-one dash fifty-one. Uh, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two budget amendment number one, is that correct? Yes, it is. All right, um, are there any further comments or questions on these amendments? And do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash fifty-one?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash fifty-one, adopting the budget amendment number one for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year with the correction of the negative four fifty-three thousand being changed to positive two ninety-three thousand, as stated earlier.
Okay, thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further comments? And we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Windsor.
Hi.
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 All right.
The motion carries unanimously. All right, the next item is a public hearing on stormwater management plan. The city, through Mark Johnson, submitted the new stormwater management plan, or SWMP, to the State Division of Water Quality prior to its due date of November eighth, twenty twenty-one. One of the requirements of the SWMP is certification from the city that the SWMP was prepared under the city's direction by qualified personnel, and that the information, to the best of their knowledge, is true, accurate, and complete. For this purpose, on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, Jones and Associates made a very engaging and enlightening presentation on the stormwater program to the entire city council. Many members of the community, including future members of city council, were very fortunate to be in attendance. The presentation covered an overview of the stormwater program, including addressing all six minimum control measures required in the SWMP. The purpose of the SWMP coming for, before the city council is to officially adopt the plan by resolution and authorize the mayor to, to sign the certification. Brandon, anything you wanna add to that?
I can see that our presentation, uh, had its desired impact.
For sure, for sure it did. All right, all right, um, any? All right, any questions or comments from council? Then I will entertain, entertain a motion to open public hearing on storm water management plan.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now open for public hearing on the storm water management plan. And hearing, no comment. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. So we will move to resolution 21-52, Storm Water Management Plan. Are there any comments or questions from council?
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve resolution 21-52, the resolution of South River City adopting the storm water management plan.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further comments? And we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Halverson.
Hi.
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 The motion carries unanimously.
Very good job, staff.
Way to go.
Brandon, that was awesome.
Way to go.
It needed to be done.
It did need to be done. All right, next item is resolution 21-53, Approval of Check Signers. South River City requires two signatures on all city checks, and the bank requires council to approve signers through resolution. Because full-time employees are more likely to be available when signers are needed, but the city finance director and recorder are not legally able to sign the checks, the city manager and finance director recommended positions of treasurer, Alicia Springmeyer, city manager, David Larson, community service director, Trevor Kahoon, and development coordinator, Kim Gwille, be assigned to this task. Are there comments or questions on this?
Just to clarify, this is only the approval. You couldn't have two of these people sign the check. Is that correct?
So the approval process goes through our procurement policy as far as who authorizes spend. But then, once that is authorized and the checks are cut, we have to have two signers on the actual check signature.
So these new people identified could be both signers? You don't need one of the, yeah.
So for example, Trevor and Kim could be the ones that sign it one week. But they were not part of the approval process. That approval took place and authorized the check to be cut.
And to this point, who were the people?
To this point, it's been Shaylee and myself. It had been Paul, and it had been, and it had been front desk receptionist.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? And do I have a motion to approve resolution 21-53?
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further comments? We'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Windsor.
Hi.
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 And the motion carries unanimously. Our next item is a discussion item on the public works facility design, and I'm going to turn the time over to Dave.
We are in process of eventually selecting an architect. That should be coming before the city council here quickly. The municipal utilities committee has reviewed the responses to requests for statements of qualifications. Staff is now preparing interviews to help narrow that, narrow that down and make a selection. Prior to getting an architect on board, we wanted to have a discussion with the city council as far as the scope of that project, so that direction can be given when we sit down with an architect and come up with a preliminary design at this stage. We're not doing a full-scale design. We're just simply needing a preliminary design. Industry standard is a 30% design, so that we can then know what we're looking at from a financial standpoint and, and what we would need to do to fund that project. In order to get there, we want to understand scope of the building. And as there's been discussions about what would go down there, obviously, all of the public works facility needs till bid, build out has been, has been kind of the underlying assumption there. But the question that we want to pose at this stage is, the city council put $50,000 in this current budget year to refresh this building that we're sitting in. Carpet and paint specifically was to, was put in the budget to do that. As we've been looking at the needs of this building and the needs of, of staff and, and the experience and feelings that people get when they come into the building, the thought was when we move all of the office furniture and everything to do carpet and paint, if we put it back in a different configuration, perhaps it could, it could last us a little while longer. What we've come to understand is that if we touch anything beyond carpet and paint, then that could be a very expensive proposition due to ADA compliance and, and other things. And so the conversation is, as was brought up previously, what's the long-term solution for city hall? Are we looking at two separate buildings? If we are, then that informs what we're doing for the public works building. Or are we looking at potentially one building, one project, that would increase the cost of that particular project, but would be a lower cost than two separate projects with all the overhead and management and whatnot of two separate projects? So that's really the, the idea we want to present. I know that this has kind of been batted around in people's heads for a while, but we've never actually put that on the table and had a discussion to inform this process, especially getting an architect on board here soon. So we present that as an idea. The concept, again, has been batted around. But, but is that something that council wants looked at when the architect gets on board?
How does the council feel about this option?
I'd love to hear from the municipal utilities committee.
Given the choice that the council's made on the location of the proposed public works building, I think it needs to be two separate buildings. I think you go back eight, 10 years, there's been a lot of discussion as to a new city hall, see, building, and there were some options discussed. To have an open discussion about that, I mean, I give you the best negotiating tool if you want to continue down that path. But there were some areas identified closer to the center of town, closer to the central facilities, and if I'm giving too much leeways to, or I'm talking central being the key aspect of the city.
And I, I mean, we really haven't, to answer your question, discussed that specifically too much, other than we, we started the conversation a little bit last time. And, and I would agree. I think economically, we may get some benefit from doing it together, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to, in my mind, to put it clear down at one end versus the other end. I mean, you'd lose a little bit of that tradition. I, I would probably prefer it to be two separate facilities.
Does it cost much more for two different, that's a dumb question, but let me rephrase that. Does staff anticipate cost savings in maintaining one larger building versus two smaller locations? I mean, is that a significant saving?
I think it would be, yes. I think, to your point, financially, it makes a lot of sense, and that's why we bring it up. Because now's the time to make that financial decision. But is that the only consideration?
Any other, anyone want to chime in?
It's hard for, I would love to have a big, beautiful city hall, but it's hard to almost justify that with our tax base. Like this works for us right now, and at build out, probably will still work, and it's quirky, and that's okay. I'm quirky, I'm okay.
But what, what about also, we, we could have some staff in the public works facility, not all staff in the public. I mean, there is room. I mean, I think if you designed some office space and some other, what do I want to say, transitional space in the, in the public works facility, that you could carry the overflow if we get, if we need it in the meantime. But we also own other property in the city that could be a city hall. We own, I mean, a lot of different things. I mean, that, that we could use to, to have, to house it. But to answer your question, Angie, I, I don't know, from my standpoint, it's so much the maintenance side of it. It is, you do save on that upfront cost. I mean, the design drastically changed the infrastructure that you're bringing into the building. You're not paying for it twice. None of the development costs you're paying twice. You're paying it one time. It would be significantly less money to do it in one building. I just can't picture it down where the public works facility is in my head, but that's, that's, that's an opinion, not necessarily a.
One thing to consider when we're looking at, you know, long-term. So right now, our, our plan, our capital facilities plan has the, the replacement of this building in 10 to 15 years. And so what are, what are the facility impacts of creating this place to the last 10 or 15 more years to? And what financial impact would that have? For instance, if we did an entire renovation to make it flow a little bit better, we're looking at probably 300,000 to 500,000 in a renovation cost. And that doesn't add any more office spaces. That just rearranges office spaces. So, so there's that, that consideration.
So what's the financial impact with an architect if you say, give us a few options? We need to give them a lot of details? In other words, if, if we said, give us an option to put, you know, the city offices in with the new public works building? Is that an extra $50,000? Is that a $5,000?
We can ask that question when we do interviews. Essentially, give option of what it is just public works only for a firm, from, what I'm hearing you say is, let's get a dollar figure, right, to know what it would be to have it be a joint facility or just public works only.
Yeah, I mean, in my mind, there's a whole bunch of different questions. When do we have enough money? Or will we have enough money to go ahead and build a new city hall right now? Or will we have to bond it, or, you know, some other method? So if we're even going to go down that path, we need to know upfront, you know. We don't want to pay an architect a lot of money to put together a design that we're going to say, that's great, but we can't afford it for another X number of years.
And Quinn, maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but I think we're going to be bonding for it regardless. And then I guess the question is, is are we going to bond? How, are we going to do it all in one bond? Or is it something different? I mean, yeah, there's no, no doubt about that, but. The others, the others, sorry, Quinn, I think you had one request, but when we talked about the flex space, I do think we need the option. Because we also need to keep in mind the potential of needing space for future police enforcement. Or even for our current sheriff.
And my, well, the comment was just to echo, you know, what Spencer said. Doesn't seem, at least today, to be an ideal location for city hall, clear at one end of the city. But maybe things will change. If our first, hill, air force base will go away, and there won't be a limited zone, and we can build a whole bunch more homes at the other end, you know.
One other, one other consideration, just to help think outside the box. There's a, there feasibly, we could keep this building as a meeting space for city councils. The hall could still be this meeting space, and then the administration of the city offices could be down at city offices. For example, we get on average two to five people that walk in the door each day. So there's not a high foot traffic in this building for our, our residents. So transferring that two miles down the road wouldn't impact that, that drastically. But that is an option that we could maintain this facility and, and perhaps even expand the, the meeting room into the rooms down there. And so this creates a bigger council chambers and meeting space for the, the public that we could rent out and operate as a accessory, leaving maybe perhaps the other end for public safety, that we could, we could retrofit that as well.
I just kind of ask all the sentiments that Spencer stated. I really love having city hall here in the central of the city. It's just, it's just cute, I think. I, I do feel that there is some, definitely some future use we can, like, we need to look into and consider when thinking about a public works building. But I'm also with Quinn. I, I kind of just say I need more information. So I'm wondering, is there a way that we can have like a return of investment presented to us that shows what our different options are if we were to go down and, and, you know, go to one project, one building, and public works? The cost of it, the cost that it would be on the bond, the interest rate of that bond, all of that compared to what we would do here if we kept city offices here and our meetings here, or just our meetings here? I just feel like I need more information before I can give a blanket yes or no. And that would be beneficial for us to be able to weigh it a little bit more clearly.
Sure.
I, I think it's easy to know, even at the 30,000 foot view, that maintenance of one building and cost of construction of one building is going to be cheaper. The question is how much cheaper, and is that worth it, considering, you know, the, the image and the location and, and things like that? So I agree that there, there are a number of different considerations there. We know it would be cheaper. If we want to know how much cheaper and, and really dig into those options, then it'll, you know, take some time.
Is that the desire of the council then, to request further information? See what the cost savings might be?
I think part of it is we need to know, I mean, is the architect, like Quinn, to Quinn's point, are we going to be paying $5,000 more to have him say, if you design it with this wing on the side, it's going to be X amount. If you design it with this by itself, it's this. We need to know that difference before we say, yeah, go get an architect.
Well, the only, the only way you're going to get that number is by getting to that 30% design, and they, they would have to give you a phased design with that as an option. And then we get numbers back to us, you know, based on, either on square footage or whatever. It says here, this is how much the extra this is going to cost you. There's no other way to do it. Because that, you know, and, I mean, we could, we could put numbers together, I think, even as a committee, and come up with some ideas on what it's going to cost per square foot, but in today's world, that's a little scary. And so, and all, and then your architect's fees are all based on percentages anyway. And so it, it just goes up incrementally that way.
So we, I'm.
No, I just, I think the only way to get that information to you is by getting a phased design. And maybe we just, that's the question that they ask the architects as they interview them, is how much would it cost for that phased design? And then that's the extra we would be committing to find out what that cost is.
Okay, so I guess my, my two thoughts on that. We have that budgeted, if I recall. We budgeted the purchase amount. Any savings went towards the design. So that's already taken count, in account, considered. Oh, my goodness, it's good to know. Thank you. So that's taken care of.
We budgeted for the architect work, $100,000 this year.
Okay, perfect, thank you. My second is, I, I can see the need of having the extra space. I just want to make sure that as we proceed, that we're doing this as a need and not a want. So there's no like, oh, I would love to have a brand new office, that we don't, can't really afford it. So as we go forward, I just want to make sure that that's what we're considering.
And, and I would say the only reason we're bringing this forward as staff is because of cost. Right? I think, I think the initial thought is there's a different location that would make sense for city hall. However, when we do look at it from a, from a fiduciary financial standpoint, there, there's no way that we can ignore the option of doing it cheaper and doing it sooner and doing it with one bond versus two, doing it with one architect versus two, all of that. And, and I don't mean this in a, in a disrespectful way, but in good conscience, I feel like we have to look at that from a financial standpoint. And so that, that's the only reason we're bringing that forward is because it is a financial consideration. What's the best financial position for the city, because we don't want to overspend? And, and it's not, in my mind, and, and I'm happy to have a conversation about this, but working in this building every day, working with other people that are in this building every day, having people come and visit us in this building every day, I think that this building does not represent who we are very well. And I think that it, it contributes to certain feelings of staff and employees. Certain feelings of staff and employees in this building and others, uh, you know, the public works. Situation is, is similar and we're trying to rectify that. We know that city hall is on the list at some point. And again, from a financial perspective, um, it screams at us that there's a cheaper way to get a city hall. And, and get city offices, but is, is that the decision? And if, and if you just can't move past the. It, it should be in a different location, then we don't move, we can't move past it. And that's fine. And that's a, that's a policy decision that the city council gets to make and determine and. And as staff, we will run with that wherever, wherever you tell us to run with it. So we just felt obligated almost. To bring up the financial consideration of, of, we're moving down a path and by adding on. A wing or, or whatever, and what does that do? And, and financially, we know it would be cheaper. We don't know exactly how much.
And, and that's fair. And I, I, I'm going to say I speak for everybody when we want staff to feel like they are. Valued and represented well. So I completely, uh, I, I agree with your sentiment there.
I have to say, I felt some of that too, just, um, when I've had people meet me here, um. It is a little bit. I don't know. I, I can understand how staff working here every day. Would, uh, benefit from a, a facility that just worked better and, um. Just flowed better. Um, so.
Can I add one, can I add one thing to that? Staff would benefit and staff would be primary beneficiaries. But it's not staff who ultimately is the only beneficiary. It, it is the residents of the community. It is people that come and do business with the community and, and it is. It's more than just city staff is looking for a different facility. We're, we're not. Um, but we recognize the long-term need there and then, and an opportunity right in front of us. So. Again, I, I don't want to feel like we are, I hope you don't feel like we are pushing you to make a decision one way or the other. We're just simply saying that there's a, there's a financial consideration here that we, we feel has to be addressed. And, and now's the time to make that decision. So if you're asking for more information, we're happy to provide that. Um, some of that has to come from an architect. It can't come from our own estimates, although we can put estimate to it. And so we're happy to do that. Um, but I hope that it is a conversation about what is the long-term? Need of the city, not the current need of city staff members, because we're going to turn over and change and, right, we're. It's not a benefit directly to us, although we would feel it, no.
Okay, so is council asking for more information? Are we asking?
I think, I, I think before you give them a final decision, but. Currently you're just meeting with the architect and we're not even talking prices with an architect. We are just interviewing an architect and then we sit down and negotiate with the architect on price. That's a whole nother phase. That can be determined. And based on the price and brought back to the council. Am I, did I say that right, Wayne? And don't you think that's? So I still think we go through this interview process, we select our architect. And we're not giving them full direction yet until we sit down with them and, and work out that price in that detail. And I think if it's. You can work that into those negotiations as far as the thirty percent concept as well.
That's an important clarification that, you know, procurement policy, state code and our own. Requires us to have a conversation with the architect and interview and make this a selection based on qualifications, not on cost. And so we're, we're required to go about it that way. And we'll make a selection on who the best architect is based on qualifications or whatnot. And once we make a selection and rank them, then we start at number one and come up with a negotiated price for the service. And if we're okay with that, then we proceed. If we're not okay with that, can't come to terms, then you move to number two. And, and that's how the selection has to work. And so.
Cause if we're okay with the price of the architect, they can design it to where that section of the building can be either be built or not be built. If we want to do it that way, if we're okay with the negotiated price of the architect, then I would, that would be my suggestion, but.
Council do with that? Okay. Do you have your direction?
Sounds great.
All right. Next item is new business. Does anyone have anything?
I have one, um, small item on our, um. Page twelve of our packet. We had a charge in our, um. Register for the newsletter printing is two hundred twenty-six fifty for this month, November twenty-third. So my question is. Uh, do we still feel like we need to do a printed newsletter? Or do we have enough avenues that we can have people join our email blast and we have the newsletter go out? Um, it's already online. Is that something we want to continue? I would save this a couple thousand dollars a year. I don't know. How people feel about that.
Anybody have an opinion?
I know there's, I know there's a lot of people who.
Read it.
Like the paper. That several of my neighbors do. Um, I don't personally read it that way, but, uh. I know it's been commented on, they, they enjoy it, but they also are of an older generation as well.
And I rec, I recognize that, but I just, like, anybody has online bill pay, they don't get it anyways. Like, I don't get it.
You don't?
I don't get it. I don't did that. I, I don't get it. Everybody should get it. I don't get it. Am I supposed to mail that every day, every month?
Every day. Okay, that, yeah. I think we could just push the option for, um, so is it, is it the printing by? Each address that it's sent out to, or is it a bulk cost?
Per household, but per, per user.
So perhaps we could just drive those who do, who don't check it and just chuck it in, but would be one that would check online to. Sign up for bill pay or sign up for paperless. But still allow it for those residents who prefer to get it in the mail and maybe a good chunk might drop down.
Some, some alternatives, um, just from prior experience, we could do a, a quarterly physical newsletter. And then supplement that with smaller notices, a third page size. Each month on, on smaller items that may go out and then do on the off months, do an additional newsletter. Um, we can expand our base. We need to talk to Curtis about maybe getting his mailing lists for recreation. And adding them to, to our constant context. So there's, there's ways that we could expand that. Um, and, and kind of save some, some money on that if we wanted to do it that way. Um, previous experience, we had a physical newsletter that we mailed out in utility bill, but then I had a all city. Uh, brochure that we'd mail out, uh, do it on every door direct mail, um, quarterly. That typically followed major events and that was, that's a larger budget item, though it's not cheaper. And then a digital newsletter, which is far cheaper than any of the other options. So there, there's some, a variety of options there.
One thing that I've seen before when cities make a decision to essentially go paperless. Um, is that it is a little bit of a process. If we choose to go paperless and we're no longer going to have a. A paper utility bill, then, then you need to essentially notice that over time and, and have. Kind of a process for people to know that that's going to change. And, and essentially request everybody to move paperless or, or not, but. But a hybrid is what we're in right now without a conscious decision of we are actively moving everybody over. But if we do make a decision of actively moving everybody over, then, then that, that actually takes a little bit of work. For those that do get a paper bill, um, to turn them over into, into a. Digital situation or a paperless situation. But it does, it does save.
Something that the public relations wants to discuss in committee or?
Truly.
Can I tag on that one? I, I did have a resident talking about the, the newsletter that comes out. They pay. Automatic pay whatever, um, but they get the envelope with the newsletter. That just gets thrown away. Is that envelope automatically going with every newsletter regardless of who's paying? Would that save any money to not send out those envelopes?
And, and the mail stuffers won't differentiate based on accounts. It's just they get the stack of envelopes and they put them in every. Every envelope they go down.
So if you go bill pay on your utility bill, you won't, uh, yeah. If you sign up for bill pay, so you don't get the statement in the mail, you won't get the newsletter either, right? Okay.
All right. Any other new business? Okay, moved to reports. I just have a couple of things. Uh, in CAG, we discussed the third quarter sales tax, um. Just awarded almost fifteen million to Davis County Cities this year. Um, the, the nice thing about this grant that you can apply for is it's better than Wasatch Front grants in that. You don't have to wait for years for implementation and, um, you know, that's, that's one big thing. Um, but the grant is used for new roads or widening of existing roads. This is something to keep on your radar. Um, I talked to Brandon and, you know, it possibly could be used for like the widening. Of twenty-seven-hundred east, although I think we have to have, doesn't have to be, do something with the state to make that a. I don't know, I can't remember what you call it, type of road. It's like.
Oh, functional classification.
Yes.
Yeah, that, it, right. So the funding has to be on a road that's functionally classified with them. Um, and, and shows up as functionally classified on Wasatch Front and UDOTs maps. And twenty-seven-hundred is not.
Not.
No.
So that would be something that we'd need to.
Right, if, if it qualifies, if that would be, yeah.
Right.
Cause they're looking more at those regional type roads.
Right.
But you are right, Mary, that is very good funding for the, as, as far as the. Ability to, to, to use the funds and actually get projects done without a lot of red tape. It's very good.
Right.
With that road, sorry to interrupt, with that twenty-seven-hundred, have that possibility to change classification when they? Extend the widening of eighty-nine down to the I eighty-four change? Do we have the opportunity to?
It's more to where it connects. It doesn't really.
Connectivity.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, it just kind of.
So there would have to be a frontage road all the way up into Leighton or something?
Right, right. I, I, I mean, I think that's the more likely way they would look at it. I, I don't know.
The only, we've looked at that in the past when that, when the county first implemented that, we actually received that grant a few years ago for the. Phase one of Old Fort Road, um, that that is functionally classified and, uh. Um, I believe that's the only road in the city that actually qualifies is that Old Fort Road.
That was actually Prop one funds, but yeah, the third, third quarter sales tax is a lot bigger. Pot of money, yeah.
Right, but the qualifications are similar.
But they're similar, yeah.
Yeah.
Are there other roads we could consider that wouldn't need to be functionally classified, like our own streets?
Say that again.
Are there, are there streets that South Weaver owns and maintains that we could think about widening that you can think of?
Well, I think that the problem is in order to, to be able to get these funds, it has to be.
Oh, sorry. I thought if it was just a state road. Okay, sorry. Understood.
So would Old Fort Road, the second phase that goes up to South Weaver Drive, would that, would that qualify?
It would.
Okay, so that's something that we could possibly look into.
It would, and there, you know, the, where that intersection will be someday in the future on, on, uh. South Weaver Drive, um, is maybe needs a little bit. More funding than what a developer would typically put together and that may be something where, uh, you know. The city's funds along with the developer maybe can get that done, but. It would be driven by development likely.
Okay. Um, all right. And then the next one, uh, we had a meeting with the Trails Foundation of Northern Utah. To discuss maintenance of the River Trail in South Weaver, um, but it was decided that the Trails Foundation. Would continue to maintain the South Weaver portion, so, uh, just for. Your.
Good job.
G whiz file. So, okay, um, let's go to Councilman Windsor. Do you have anything?
Uh, the Parks Committee met last week. We just discussed different, um. Uh, maintenance concerns throughout the parks, um, talked about ways that we can get some feedback from residents in the. The coming year, so not a whole lot to report, just different things we did on there. Um, and then I do just want to put a plug in for our youth city council and recreation departments. Um, sponsoring the breakfast with Santa on the December eleventh, which is Saturday at nine AM. Um, you can sign up on support sites, uh, pay in advance. It's a little bit cheaper, but that will be at the family activity center. That's it.
Great. Councilman Soroque.
Not too much, um, new. The monitoring of the dust has continued, um. We've reduced the number of dust collection locations to eight, but. Um, the amounts are still relatively low. They have been increasing in the last three weeks as we've had no rain. Um, that information's been shared with the gravel pit committee. We have our next, um. Meeting with them this coming Monday, where we'll be discussing, um. Numerous different things with them. Our next admin finance committee meeting is later this week. We will. Run through some end of the year items. I believe it's Thursday, right?
Yep.
What time's the meeting on Monday?
Monday's at four thirty. Here. And I don't know if this is appropriate time or not, but I'll, I'll do it right now. I'd just like to express my appreciation and respect to. Um, Wayne Windsor and Mayor Joe Shobloom for all their dedicated years, um. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of public here to hear it, but, um, they have attended untold meetings, committees. Worked behind the scenes, spent numerous hours, um, training me, helping me understand, um. And then I see and hear them spending, you know, days and time, um, on their own. Working for the city and I just want them to, you know, Joe and Wayne, both of you to know, I really appreciate you and, and all you've done to. Bless the lives of this city and, and also me personally. So thank you very much.
Well said. Amen. I don't have anything you need to report?
Um, the only items I have to report is the, uh, Public Safety Committee has met a couple of times to discuss, discuss our, uh. Our sheriff's, uh, contract and the renegotiating of it, and that is ongoing. So. If you have any other detailed questions, you're welcome to ask myself, Haley or the mayor, so. Uh, there's none of, that's it. And we do echo all of us, I'm sure, what Quinn just said. You guys will be sorely missed and. I'll save my tears for the fourth. But it will be, you will, you will be sadly missed.
You cry?
Yes, I cry. I cry.
I like to see that. Uh, thank you. Appreciate that. Dave?
I don't have anything else to report, but I do have the same feelings and I look forward to the fourth to express them.
Brandon?
I don't have anything to report.
Do you have the same feeling?
I have.
He cries too easy.
I actually do cry pretty easy. So just, just hang on.
Couldn't you, Brandon? All right, Trevor.
Um, just real quick, we did meet this week, um, for dust mitigation, just to give an update. We did meet. Just last week, last week, uh, with Perry City and Brigham City to talk about how. They handle their dust mitigation with their gravel pits. Um, Brigham City's gravel pit situation is very similar to ours. They. Um, Brigham City's gravel pit situation is very similar to ours. They have two large pits right outside Sardine Canyon. Um, I'm unhappy to report that it's not amazing news. Um, due to state code right now, uh, gravel pits have a non-conforming use for whatever land that they own, they can, they can mine that land, land. Um, so that's something to just keep in our mind. So as far as, I mean, as, as far as the AP, APA, that's the wrong organization, DEQ and the DAQ, um, are concerned that they're in compliance, they maintain that compliance, then, um, then they can continue their operations as usual. Um, we are still looking at equipment. This has been a crazy month, and so I apologize for not having that equipment ready to go, but it will be ready to go. Um, but that's just something to consider. One thing they did recommend is when we talk to our residents and they do have concerns to talk to their state legislators, um, hopefully by the whole city of South Weaver calling, calling ours, we can get something moving, um, with that provision in state law. Them being a, a non-conforming use regardless of what the, the zoning is. Um, they can, they can operate their business as usual. So that's just not, it's a bummer news. I know. It's, it's not what we all wanted to hear. We were hoping for great words of wisdom. Um, going along with Jamie's list that he had, he had made up for us, you know, talking to the state legislature, but also perhaps, um, because we, we have, we are, we as a city get to provide for the rest of the, the development community, uh, resource that they desperately need. Perhaps, um, with the state legislature, we can look at, um, benefiting a little bit more than we do from, from being that, allowing that type of use or having that type of use in our city. Uh, that would also have to go through the state legislature, but that's something to keep, keep in mind and consider. Um, as you're talking with other communities that, uh, uh, the Utah League of City and Towns, um, especially those with gravel pits, uh, perhaps if enough of us get together, we can, we can make a difference on that side of the state legislature. Other than that, it has been amazing to sort of with you guys, um, in the six months I've been here. Thank you for being warm and welcoming and putting me to work right away.
Thank you, Trevor. Michelle, anything, questions? All right. Then if there are no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
You opposed, the meeting is adjourned.